Good evening, everyone. This is the September 24th, 2024 meeting of the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a regular meeting. This is a hybrid meeting. We will have people on Zoom and here in person. We have a number of items to go over. Number of items to go over. First item, first issue is we need to do a roll call of attendees on the commissioners. Dan Radman here, Krista Nielsen.
Yeah.
John Cris.
Here.
Chris Haring.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Paul Knag.
Here.
Alan Swerdlo is, you know, Tom Benton.
Here.
And Eric Knowles. And Christina Larson is not on yet. Okay, so we'll filter in if she gets there. Everyone that I just called is seated commission members. I would also like to offer congratulations to Tom Benton, Eric Knowles for being elevated to seated commission members from alternates. Welcome to the frying pan. Welcome to the frying pan. So we are now, just for edification here, but we are actively going to be seeking to fill positions for the empty alternate seats that have been vacated. That's underway. So back to the regular meeting items here. First item is a continuation for 93 Elm Street. Upon application of Javier Santoro, authorized agent for the town of New Canaan owner for a site plan review of section 6.3. D. Point two to allow installation of a new, of a sign in retail A zone at 93 Elm Street, block T, map 43, lot 811. Who do we have from? Please come up, come up to the podium or to the table and state your name and association with the project and give us a description of the resubmission.
I'm Luke Parker Bowles, CEO of Cinema Lab and Playhouse Lab. Thank you for having us. We've coming back to you again with respect to signage for the pub at the playhouse. Initially, we had a design that would protrude from the playhouse in a sort of traditional pub sign way. That was not found to be acceptable, so we have worked with our designers to find an alternative way of doing it that goes with code and working with Sarah. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again on behalf of the pub. Since our last meeting, we've worked closely with Sarah and the team to ensure that our new sign design fully complies with the requirements set forth by this committee. We appreciate your guidance and believe the new design addresses all previous concerns. The sign is incredibly important to the success of our business and for the community itself. Despite being in operation for three months, we've noticed that many people in the area still aren't aware of who we are and what we offer. The Playhouse Pub is a public space where everyone is welcome. Our goal is to foster a sense of community. We are not a private club. We are a gathering place for locals and visitors alike, and the sign will help us communicate that more effectively. With more visibility, we can draw more foot traffic, which will not only help our business, but will also contribute, contribute to the vibrancy of downtown New Canaan. The sign will be a keen element in making sure people, key element, in making sure people know that we're here and open to the public, offering a warm, welcoming environment for all. In closing, I want to emphasize how crucial this is for us. This sign is not just a piece of branding. It's a tool that will help us connect with community and thrive as a business. I kindly ask for your support in approving this design. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant on the signage?
You, I'm sorry. I'm Commissioner Canog. There it goes. When I Googled you on your website, it does say you were a private club.
Then, then we should be talking to Google. There is a private club element to the space, but the building is not private.
Look at your website to see whether the concern you have may relate to what you put in that.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions, anyone on the proposed signage?
Commissioner Chris, just so I can look at the picture. So two lines in small letters is the underneath is pub. That's in, okay, would that be painted on or separate letters?
That will stick out. It'll be, it'll be raised lettering.
And there will be any illumination over it?
No.
To the left, if we go back to the prior photograph, please, or rendering, there seems to be something to the left of the letter P. What is that?
I think it's a measurement.
It's just dimension. I couldn't see. Okay. That's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a question. Online, there's a second sign. Are we to assume that that's not relevant, the vertical sign?
That was the previous application. That was the original.
If that is on the site, that will come off in the next few minutes.
Okay, I'm looking probably at the, at the previous one, which has pictures of both signs. Okay.
Are you?
Where are you finding that?
Yeah, Commissioner Engel, are you referring to the application website on our, on our server?
I am. I'm on New Canaan Info, and I clicked on 93 Elm Street, and it shows a date of August 27th. And I see, I don't see, I, I don't see one with a different date, so that must be as of a month ago, and it has both signs.
That's the original submission. That's not, was being considered last month. The commission asked that they come back with this redesign. The two other files are posted on the website. We were just unable to delete original files from the, from the online file.
Okay, I see the pub two dot PDF, and I think that's the one that you're referring to now. So we're, we're good. My, my second question is, and maybe it's, it's just a legal point with Sarah, but in the planner's memo, this is referred to as not the primary use, but secondary use, and that a secondary use is, does not usually get a sign. And I thought, well, this is not, what, what, what makes this a secondary use? It seems that the pub is a separate business from the theater, even though they're commonly managed, commonly owned. So I just wanted to understand what makes it an accessory use or a secondary use.
So the playhouse and 93 Elm Street in general has only site plan approval to operate as a theater, not to operate as a restaurant. They, in their, you know, represent representations, when you all granted site plan approval for the playhouse, they represented that they are a theater with these accessory uses that included the bar. You all discussed the restaurant or the food component of it at that time, so that this is coming from the representations they made about two years ago when they received their initial approvals.
Great. Thanks for the explanation.
Commissioners, any further questions? I think we're clear. Can we vote on this now? We, what, we do the end? Okay. Do I have a motion on this particular signage?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, call to vote. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yeah.
John Cris.
Yes.
Chris Haring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Alan Swerdlo.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
And Eric Knowles.
Oh, yes.
Unanimously approved. Thank you.
Very much.
Next on the docket here, we have 274 Country Club Road. Commissioners, do we want to do this now, or do we want to hold this till the, till the end? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Matt Studer. I'm an attorney with Bircham Moses. And I'm here tonight to just briefly discuss the stipulated judgment that's before you. The stipulated in judgment, the stipulated judgment involves litigation that's currently pending in the judicial district of Stanford. The document that's before you reflects the settlement that was discussed in executive session last month in August. And I just, I've noticed that later on tonight's agenda, you have a discussion regarding a potential amendment of section 3.7 E of your regulations. I just want to make it clear that this stipulation has nothing to do with those discussions and the discussions you may have later tonight. So I'll just briefly walk through the terms of this proposed settlement and STIP, which again was discussed in executive session. This was an application by Mr. Sutton pursuant to section 3.7 E of the zoning regulations to exceed building coverage in exchange for encumbering a portion of the single-family home on the property at 274 Country Club Road to 18 feet or less in height. The application was denied by the commission. An appeal was taken and remains pending. The parties have worked on a settlement, which again discussed in executive session, the settlement calls, and I'll briefly, briefly walk you through what the settlement calls for. It calls for the commission to grant the application for the plaintiff's special permit based on the following conditions. The height of the residence is to be restricted and encumbered as proposed in the original application. In addition, the applicant, the property owner, has agreed to restrict the height of the proposed pool house to 12 feet and two and three quarters inches. A restriction will be recorded on the land records encumbering both the height of the residence and the height of the pool house. As discussed, we, it is the town attorney's position that the settlement is fair, equitable, consistent with the regulations, and fits with the character of the neighborhood. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this proposed stipulation. I do know the plaintiff's attorney is present. If you would like to briefly address the commission, otherwise we, you would typically take public comment, and then if you're in a position to do so, vote on the stipulation in public.
That's fine. Commissioners, I would, as, as you all know, we did have a special meeting in executive session for this discussion on this particular appeal and the resolution. If I'm correct, I believe it was John, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was John Engel, Paul Knag, and Alan Swerdlo. You were not at the executive session for that. Is that correct?
I believe, I believe Commissioner Canog was at the executive session.
So you were not.
Haring was not.
Okay. Just to keep things square on the legal standpoint, I would recommend you not vote on this particular resolution. The remaining six commission members can vote on it. Okay. Commission members, any questions for the applicant on us? We're clear. I think we've been through this enough already. Anything further on your side?
No, I'm not sure if applicant's counsel would like to, nothing. Oh, then typically the commission would ask if there's any public comment or opposition to this proposed stipulation.
I will. I was just asking you.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
To the public, if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application or anyone in Zoom world that wants to speak to it. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no. All right. Commission members, the ones that were present for the executive session on this, I would call to vote on this one.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Chris, second.
Call, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
Eric Knowles.
Yes.
Okay, so this one passes. Next application is 31 East Avenue. Upon application of Lena Booth, authorized agent for 31 East Avenue LLC, owners for a site plan approval pursuant to sections 4.4. C. Point one to allow a change of use at this location for a yoga studio in the business A zone at 31 East Avenue, map T, block 74, lot 99. Who's here from the applicant side to speak to this? Okay, we'll leave this for last, and they ask again.
Make sure that, I, I mean, it's a pretty simple application and.
We need an applicant here.
Okay.
Number four, One Park Street, upon application of Caroline Smiddle, authorized agent for Congregational Church, owners for site, sign, site plan approval of sections 6.3. D to permit signage in the dimensions of six foot by six and a half instead of the allowed four foot by four foot in the business A zone at One Park Street, map L, block 204, lot 884. For this application, I need to recuse myself since I am on the Building and Grounds Committee.
Okay. Take it.
Because I'm also on the buildings.
My name is Doug Simpson, and I also am on the Buildings and Grounds Committee at the Congregational Church. We're here seeking approval to install a sign in our front circle. We believe that the permanent sign structure will allow us to better communicate activities that take place at our church that are open to the entire community. The, the actual banners that will go on the, the blank portion of the sign will be dynamic and reflect activities that are taking place seasonally as well as offerings that may come up from time to time. I'm happy to answer any additional questions if anybody has any.
Commissioners?
This Commissioner Chris, you said banners. Could you go in more detail what you mean?
They're just, just digital prints, printouts that will sit on the flat structure that's in the sign.
So the sign won't be permanently lettered. It will be.
No, it will not be permanent. It'll be, it'll be changing with this, with the activities that are taking place.
But is it electric or it'll be like?
No, no, no. Paper printed, yes.
Paper printed, so it's not an electric sign?
No, it's not an electric sign. And we, we have no plans for illumination.
Including just a lamp shining on it. There'll be no plans.
None at this time.
Just a safety question, given the size of the sign and that it is by a thoroughfare where people will be driving, mainly it's not a sort of active road. I'm wondering about sightlines and safety issues.
The actual circle itself, the grassy circle, is set off from, from east, or excuse me, from Park Street by about 17 feet. And we're going to be backed off into that approximately another 10 feet from there, so it is roughly 27 feet from the road.
Okay, thank you. My questions, thank you.
Yeah. Question?
I wish you had a sample of one of the proposed signs, signs in terms of the font, the size, whether you use color or imagery. Can you address that a little bit?
I, I think that it will depend upon the activity that's being advertised. I know there was a, a color image of some of the offerings around Christmas time that we offer, the different services that are available. You know, I think it will really change by, by what activity it's, it's designed to be announcing.
Commissioner Canog, how many square feet is this sign?
The actual area is designed to take a, a printer that's 60 inches by 40 inches. So that's what, five, four by three, four, so it's about 16 square feet?
Okay, because it says in our, in the planner's memo, it says six square feet.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a typo?
Yeah, it's a typo, I think, from the application itself. It's, you know, it's six feet tall, but I believe about six feet wide.
That's the structure itself is, yes, not the, not the sign.
And, and normally if it's more than four, if, if the rule is that if it's more than four square feet, it needs to be approved by us.
So I believe there's a typo in my memo. I mean, like six by six and four by four. So if it's larger than four by four, which is 16 square feet, math is not my strong suit. I will.
Okay.
Be honest, so it's four by four does not require site plan approval, six by six would therefore require.
So have you done a survey of, of other churches in the, in the town and what type of signs they have out in front of them?
I have not, no.
So.
Dad, I thought the same thing, and as I drove through town today, I looked at a couple of the churches and at least one or two have like a, what I would call a sandwich board with any sort of upcoming, you know, worship this Sunday, whatever the topic is, so.
So you think it's, that they would be similar to this?
Well, a sandwich board is more mobile, right? Like you can fold it up and bring it in at night as opposed to this as a more permanent version of that, but.
In terms of the size.
Oh, I don't know about the size, probably.
Yeah.
I will say the, the church on Owen Oak, like kind of across from Roger Sherman and I don't, I don't know which church it is, Presbyterian. They hang banners on their stone wall. So churches do hang banners already in town. I, I wouldn't say that this is new, new concept.
So that's okay. You can hang a banner, but if you put up a permanent sign, even though it's a banner, is put on the sign, that's why you need a, a special permit. Is that right?
Site plan, but yes, because it's a, it's a permanent structure.
We have used aluminum poles and, and banners in the past that have blown down or, and just, you know, got caught in the wind. And the thought here is with the more permanent structure, it would enable us to keep them up without a lot of resetting all the time. This is Commissioner.
Why, why did you feel that four by four, which you could have done without coming to us, was too small?
This was a, a design that was done by a, a, a sign company, so this is what they had suggested.
Do you think that a four by four sign would be too small?
Is it the 16 square feet or is it the four by four sign?
Well, four by four would be one way to get to 16 square feet, right?
And I, I'm doing the math here, and I, I'm not good with the inches, but we're, we're not exceeding by that by a lot, and I suppose I could go back and, and ask that question.
Well, what's your opinion?
I think that this is smaller than the banners that we've used in the past that are, that are the temporary structures. And that in order to engage pedestrian visibility coming up the sidewalk and any, any vehicular visibility, it, it really needs to be that size.
So Commissioner Swerdlo here. So the, the dimension we're talking about is the dimension of the structure.
Well, I'm, I'm, I think that's the, the six by six that we're talking about.
Versus four by four, which is like 16 square feet. So it's more than double the size. I don't have a problem with this. I'm trying to figure out what the issue is.
Well, I'm not sure I understand fully what the, the 16 square feet is referring to, whether that's the entire structure or the.
I agree. I'm not sure about that either. I'm not.
The regulations are not specific. It just says a six by six sign. So, you know, in, in this case, this, this is a structure that also has a sign component to it, and obviously the structure itself is larger than the actual sign or banner that.
The sign is three feet, four inches by five feet, four inches versus the structure is six by six.
Yes.
Okay.
This Commissioner Chris, question for Ms. Carey. It says in your memo that the Historic District Commission has final approval over this because it's in the historic district, and they will be rendering their decisions subsequent to any decision by the commission. Now, to the extent the Historic District Commission wants to significantly change the sign, does that have to come back to us, or how does that work?
So I would say that if the sign is smaller and less intense than what you approved, it would not be coming back to the commission. But if the Historic District Commission said, we want a bigger sign, it would be coming back to you all. So a long, short answer is no, I don't envision it coming back to you all.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, are we ready to close this and vote?
I have one question. Does this mean we'll see less temporary banners if we start approving more permanent signs? Is this, is this a signal to the other churches, such as the Presbyterian Church, that we'd like to see less banners advertising the Fall Fair and the others, and we encourage permanent structures? Or, I mean, it just, or, or can you put up a, a permanent structure like this and continue to put banners out in front as well?
So I mean, I, I would just recommend, since this is the first one of its type before the commission considers, you know, any sort of precedent or putting, you know, tighter rails on the regulations. Let's see how this goes. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to make decisions for every church in New Canaan just based on this one application.
Okay, are we good? Let's take a vote. Well, first, I guess we need a motion.
This Commissioner Chris, I move we approve the sign as applied for. For a.
This is Commissioner Engel. I'll second the motion, and I'll give reasons because that's what we're supposed to do. I think it's in keeping with the character of the, of the God's acre, and I think it's a more attractive replacement than temporary sandwich board signs.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Chris?
I have confidence in the Historic District Commission that their decision will result in a sign that is in keeping with the Historic District ambiance.
Okay. Let's take a vote. Mr. Knag?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen, I vote yes. Mr. Cris?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Knowles?
Yes.
Mr. Swerdlo?
Yes.
And I think that's everyone, right? We don't have Christina still. Okay. So it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, back to you.
Back to you. Next item on the agenda here is 87 Main Street. Upon application of James Scatino, authorized agent for nine, 1911 Bank Building LLC, owners for a site plan approval pursuant to section 4.2. C. Point 10 to allow the construction of four dwelling units on the second floor of an existing structure in the retail A zone at 87 Main Street, map T, block 43, lot 825. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and affiliation with the application.
Sarah.
Okay. There we go.
There you go.
Is that, are we good?
Your camera's on. You just need to share yours.
Okay. Okay. Share. Boy. It's like giving me an option to share the screen.
What is the file open?
It's in the PDF.
Okay.
It's not, normally it's just green.
All right, I'll, I'll share it from my computer.
There's, I, I brought some photos tonight. We only brought him on the. There's another way.
So I can share if you know, when you submitted. Knows your application.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Sorry about that. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is James Scatino. My father Jim Scatino, uh, Scatino Architects. Also with us tonight is Prakash Badwani. He's the owner of the property. Uh, we're here tonight for a site plan application for eighty seven Main Street. Uh, the existing building is a commercial property in the retail A zone. Approximately sixty six hundred square feet of gross floor area. Um, the first floor is retail and the second floor is currently office space. Our site plan application is to uh, fill in the existing cathedral ceiling space and convert the second floor. Office area into four one bedroom apartments, less than seven hundred and fifty square foot each. As part of the project, we would also like to add an elevator to improve access to both floors and we'll need to make a handful of. Changes, modifications to the exterior windows and doors. Do you have the survey or the site plan? So that's the existing survey and um. The building is hatched there. And then to the, on the right hand side, to the east is Main Street. To the south is a fifteen foot right of way there. And there's a, a, the property line kind of follows that right of way. So it's. This, the um, south west corner is right on the right of way. And the um, north east or southeast corner, there's like ten feet of space from the corner of that building to the property line. And about seven or eight feet to the curb. Um, uh, to the, to the west, there's a small parking area and basement access, some uh. Propane tanks there and then the north side faces town hall. Um, I brought some existing photos, which would have really been helpful. Um, email them. Yeah. Real technical problem here.
Indian tech guy in the room and that's not me.
Sarah, what is your email?
Um, Sarah dot Harry.
So if you can, I think, um, well, Sarah waits for the email and calls those up. Just to explain to us what you're doing with the um.
Sure.
Shell of the building and then we'll, we'll work our way inward.
If you go to the um, the first floor plan, that might just be a good place to start. Yeah, that back, back one more.
Back one more sheet.
Uh, no, the uh, one page, one more to the right. Yeah, there it is. So that's the, the existing, that's the first floor plan and in the bottom right hand corner there is we're proposing. The new elevator entry point. And um, you'll see on the extra elevations. Um, we're proposing a new door right kind of within the width of the existing masonry opening of the window there. Other than that, there's no other real changes to the first floor in the, in this plan.
And will the existing, I mean, it's been ten years since I've been in that building. But the um, existing stair to the northeast corner, that goes all the way to what will be the second floor?
Correct, yeah. So um, we go to the second floor. You see that elevator arrives at the second floor in that same location that isn't exist, there's two stairways are. Existing egress stairs that we're utilizing. And then the two one bedroom apartments on the top side of the page is, or, or one and a half. Is kind of the area where we're filling in the cathedral ceiling there. So essentially there's four one bedrooms on the second floor. There are three, three actual one bedrooms and one studio. And um. When we, on the north side of the building, when we, when we fill in the floor and put the units there, there's. There's existing those three two story windows. We've, again, we need to stay in the existing masonry opening. And modify those windows to allow egress for the apartments above and. Put the windows back in for the retail space below. And then on the south side, we're proposing one new window at the, kind of at the bottom of the page there. It's labeled, there's a note there. Showing the new window right where there's a. Kind of a decorative panel.
Oh, that one doesn't exist there?
Right.
I see. And that'll be at the top of the second stair?
It'll be in the unit.
What's in the unit?
We, you know, that's the living area of the unit and right, we could probably get away with one window. It'd be nice to have the two and. And it's not to match the others. You'll see on the exterior elevations, which I think are.
Will there be any change to like the light cuts on the front of the building in terms of like the fan window and the door entry?
No, so that's um, the image on the screen right now, that's the front of the building for Main Street. And there's no change to that elevation.
Question for you, Commissioner Swirlo. So uh, can you give us a little brief um. Description of the history of the building? Are there two additions or one addition? When was the original building constructed?
I think the original building is nineteen eleven. And um, it seems as though there were two buildings, you know, one kind of angled shape. You go back, kind of that two thirds on the right was the original building and then one third on the left there was uh, an addition. And at some point in time, they were combined.
The red edition also in the back?
Yes, yeah.
Um, and any sense of when these were?
I don't have that information.
Time, timing of when it was added?
Excuse me?
The timing of when those were.
About the history of the building?
Yeah, I don't think the town has records on going that, uh, back that far. I, I believe that part to the left was added sometime in the nineteen forties. And then the back building was probably uh, two decades later.
Yeah, that's. Possibly the.
Alley was essentially narrowed at that point and that's when it became the first national bank of New Canaan.
So really modifications on the exterior are minimal.
Yeah.
In your proposal.
Correct.
Commissioner Benton here, um, on your first floor, if you could bring that up. The elevator looks like it's extending the, the walls, the elevator into the window cells. Is that can be visible from the outside?
No, we're gonna blackout the window. It, it'll look the, the same from the outside. So we can leave the windows there.
What do you mean by blackout? So you won't be able to see through them at all?
Right. You won't be able to see into anything, but from the outside, the window will remain.
On the one side, are you doing the whole first floor?
No, it's just that one window that's affected there. Yeah.
It seems, seems like two of them are affected.
On the left side, both windows?
Right.
Is that the same treatment on the other side with the stairway? The stairway cuts through the window as well?
No, that's, those are there, those are existing.
There, there was a um.
Oh, yeah, the um. This window. The.
Yeah. I, I can't envision what that looks like from the outside, but when you're looking at the building.
No change, you, you won't be able to see any difference between the um.
Will you be able to see through the windows on the right, not the one, the windows on the left?
Right now, what you see on the windows on the right is the stairway. And you can see it.
You can see the stair.
Yeah, they, the windows from the outside, when you look at a building like that, they just look black, you know?
Looking at the, the, the doorway entry there is the idea, you know, you have a, a new lintel going across the top there. And cutting the window is the idea to use the same sort of materials, you know, the.
Are you looking at the south elevation?
I'm looking at the south elevation, yeah, the. If you can scoot down to. The right side of that. Yeah, I was just looking at that white bar of the um, doorway there. Is, is the idea that that's kind of, kind of near the front?
We're trying to tie, tie that in. We want to stay within the rhythm of the, the openings on the, on the facade. And put the door in with the transom window above and kind of match the detailing on the existing building.
There was a letter from Terry Spring, who I think is the neighbor. Did you see that letter?
Yes, we did see that letter today.
He wanted to have a postponement and he said that he was concerned about, uh, is that a he or a she? She, she uh, wanted to postpone it and she was concerned that uh, uh, there could be some uh. Interference with her right of way. Uh, can you comment on those concerns?
Yeah, we're not, we're not in the right of way. Uh, if you go back to the site plan, um. We're, we're in that. That corner on the um, right hand side, the southeast corner there. And you, and the, you see the curve line, that's the existing curve of the um. The planter area and then that straight line beyond it, the right of way, the fifteen foot right of way, that is our property line. So we have about ten feet from that corner to the property line. And about eight feet from that corner to the, for this point of that curb. So we're just taking the, the sidewalk and expanding it into that curved corner there.
So to be, to be clear, you're not changing, from what I can tell and correct me if I'm wrong. You're not changing where the curb and planting area is currently.
Correct.
All you're doing is transforming four to five feet of mulch into a landing for the discharge of the door.
That's right.
Do you share that right of way?
We have access to that.
Yeah.
That right of way.
Yeah, both the code.
The uh, would there be an overload of uh, traffic as a result of this project uh, on the right of way?
There's um. There's no uh, any mechanical equipment for the apartments will be on the roof. Um, won't be adding any mechanical equipment on the ground, you know, in, in the back.
Well, your pay, in your, in your judgment, it doesn't affect the right of way, uh, and the neighbors' concerns uh, are not uh. Uh, something that we need to be, uh, that, the neighbors' concerns are not warranted because they, you won't interfere in any way with the right of way. Is that your testimony?
No, I, I understand the neighbors' concerns about the right of way. I just wanted to point out that we're, we're not in that area. So I.
Neighbor, so because you're not in that area, the neighbor doesn't have to be concerned.
Right. This is Commissioner Chris. I have a question on the uh, two parking spots in the back of the building. What are your thoughts on that? Well, there's no parking requirement, you know, in, in this zone and um. Prakash has.
So if I, yeah, I, I, those two parking spaces historically have always been used for. It was a, if you remember, the restaurant that used to be in there, it was an Indian restaurant, Pali. And uh, they always use that as sort of the back of the house um. For all the dumpsters and everything associated with deliveries. And so the neighbor obviously hasn't seen that type of traffic in the last ten years, right? And so that traffic will obviously pick up when we find the right tenant for that first level. And it may be possibly two tenants. Most restaurants in town are about twenty five hundred square feet. This one's four thousand square feet, so we might demise it. And it might be retail and restaurant or retail altogether or, you know, a, a combination. And then the four condos, you shouldn't see, see any traffic going down that side. Because there's no parking available for those tenants upstairs. It'll be, um, I'll have to be, I'll have to look for parking uh, for them. Um, but there might, they might be commuters, they might be, they may not require parking, but at the same time, I think. Um, it'll be a little bit more attractive for someone to live there if they have a parking spot. Um, so from that standpoint, during construction, there's a possibility that there will be a little bit more traffic, obviously for deliveries of. Whatever units we may need to add to the rooftop. We do plan on bringing in gas into the building. Uh, and um, that runs on the state road. Uh, I don't know how this particular building accesses that gas. They have gas. We might put in a proposal to try and tap into whatever sub line that has been incorporated here. Um, so um, you know, those are things to, to consider and I'm the one that reached out to Tara to see if she would want gas in her building. Um, and that's how the conversation started. Uh, that's when she found out that this was gonna be happening, but. Um, you know, right now, I don't, I don't, I don't foresee any issues and we'll happily share information with her as we progress. Uh, uh, but I don't think there was ever a requirement for noticing either to any of the neighbors associated with this plan, so. Um, but we just did share all that information with her counsel.
Commissioner Chris, again, if I can follow up a bit, I mean, uh. If the, as far as trash removal and dumpsters and these sorts of things, where are you planning to place those on the, on the property?
Yeah, so uh, I think that's where they have been historically and we'll probably cover them up, cover them up in, you know, an appropriate way. Uh, I think all of that one additional acre that's adjacent to us, that's part of the Cody family. They have all of their dumpsters farther back beyond the other forty uh, spaces that they currently have for. I believe it's seven retail uses in the front, which is everything from the ice cream shop all the way through. Um, I believe the last tenant is against the grain. Um, so everything in between the toy store, uh, M and T bank, um, all of that, essentially they use. They have garbage all the way in the back of the property. Um, we might be able to come up with something a little bit more efficient. Um, but for now, we're gonna need those two spaces. They're expensive spaces, one point two five million each for now. It's what the building costs, so.
And what are the plans for the basement?
The basement, um, you know, it's, it doesn't have high enough ceilings for. A D, different use. It's just gonna be for dry storage. There is a cooling system, a refrigeration system that was utilized by the prior bank or by the prior uh, restaurant. So it'll be available use and a lot of mechanicals are down there. There's a couple of new heating systems down there. Uh, we don't plan on having a, a separate tenant down there, but it will be for the use of the first four tenants.
Thank you.
This is uh, Commissioner Knowles. Um, I'm just looking at the, the ground floor plan at the entrance. Will that be shared by, I guess, whatever restaurant or retail tenant you get in the residence? Or will they have separate entrances?
They, same elevator, but separate stops.
Okay, so there's nothing to stop, say, a, a restaurant patron from going upstairs into the residence.
Just the functionality of the elevator, you didn't allow that to.
Right, but I, I mean, I'm looking at the, the staircase on the eastern side. I just kind of see the, the entrance way and then you can go up. So I could, I could be a. You know, a, a patron and just walk up the stairs and then. You know, a patron and just walk up the stairs and then be in the residential portion.
Yeah. Can you go to the second floor? Second floor plan. Yeah, there's, there is a door at the top, but.
Would it be locked or would it be?
Yeah, there's a lot of planning that needs to happen and obviously, you know, for the security of tenants, we've got to figure out. Whether there's key card access or any sort of other things that need to be added in order for accessibility from retail space to.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I'm just obviously concerned for anybody who. Rents an apartment and you're at the restaurant and head upstairs or whoever that might be, you know, you're not, separation of uses isn't really there with the, with the shared. Stair, that's a concern.
Yeah, no, currently it's not, it's not that way, but. The plan will be separated. Fireproofed.
Right, no, I understand, and then maybe this is a question for Sarah. Is there a minimum size by, whether it's, it's state code or, or town code of a dwelling unit?
There is not a minimum requirement in retail A for dwelling units. I assume there may be a building code requirement, but in retail A at this time, we actually require they can't be larger than 750 square feet, so these are. You know, in range with what retail A is requiring.
Right, yeah, no, I, I just, it's, you know, 480 square foot, it's. About the same size as my old apartment in the West Village, but. Okay.
This is Commissioner Chris, again, sir, you mentioned, used the term condo when speaking of the dwelling, dwelling units.
Yeah.
So these will be sold?
No, they will, well, currently the plan is for me to basically hold on to them, but they will be. Separated in terms of all utilities, and if at some point in the future, I do decide to dispose or sell of them separately. We can do that, but they will be apartments, if you will, yeah, basically for rent. As, that's my current plan.
So there will be condo capable with separate metering breach unit and so forth, so that. You choose to convert to condo, you have the sort of infrastructure there to do so as the concept.
So to that, to that point, the current building was a single tenant building. I'm assuming the electrical service coming to the building is a single service coming in.
Yeah, it's actually not a single tenant building, we do have a tenant in there right now, it's a commodities company on the second level, Antamo. And they're a trading shop out of Kansas City. And they, they currently utilize only about 1,200 square feet of 2,600 on the second level. I believe there's a few separate meters, but the first level in its entirety, when it was a restaurant, is separately metered.
And are the current electric meters, are they located on the back of the building facing those two parking spots? Do we know?
You know, I'm not really sure, it might actually be in the basement, but.
Yeah, I think they're, they might be in the lower level, I know there's like three panels throughout the interior of it. Our next step would be to bring the mechanical, electrical plumbing engineers in and. These are preliminary drawings.
Sure, I'm just given the, the tightness of this, of the site relative to property lines, I'm just concerned about. Electrical, there's going to be a meter bank and disconnects and everything on the exterior for electrical service, right? You mentioned gas service coming in, so there's going to be a gas meters somewhere because they're going to be individually metered. Like to know where that's going to be.
Yeah, and the town actually has a requirement on not having that exposed on the outside now. So we do have to plan around all that and there will be possibly as many as eight meters, right? Because it'd be possibly, you know, well, sorry, six, plus one for the landlord.
Right, two plus, yeah, seven, and then also HVAC units, you know, what the plan is for. Split system condensers and where on the site are they going to go? Is there, I don't know, is there a roof, flat roof available for this? There is.
Yeah, there's a large, and there's a nice parapet along the whole.
Oh, good.
Perimeter, Sarah, you didn't get the photos today?
No, they did not come in.
Well, that'll help.
I have a nice video of the outside and I could send it to you guys, but basically it shows the rooftop mechanicals right now. And there's three newer systems up there and there were big train systems that were put in in 2019. So, but we'll be very careful with, obviously, aesthetics is going to be very important and. You know, if there's, most of these units will probably end up being smaller. And so they'll be easier to manage, but there's plenty of room in the basement, there's plenty of room on the rooftop. And obviously, we can't use a lot of the outside either. Or, you know, I'm sure that was put in place because of, you know, being so close to the roads and stuff, you don't want any. Cars running into gas meters and things like.
Well, that's, that's where I'm going with it, I kind of share the same concerns that Terry Spring brought up in her letter about. Specifically on the right of way side, which is the south elevation, trying to not locate anything on that elevation. Anything further?
From a, a unit design perspective, are they? Is it going to be? You know, wheelchair accessible, so I think it looks like all the doors are 36 and are the bathrooms.
Yeah, that was the plan, that is the plan, that was the purpose of the elevator, for some reason, it just gets too cost prohibitive. You know, we might change that, but I did want to make them accessible, a lot of people in town do need housing and.
Okay, yeah, no, I saw the circular rotations in the bathroom and I was trying to figure out if that was part of it, so.
Commissioners, anything further? Okay. Thank you. Public comment, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Is there anyone in Zoom world that would like to speak to this application? Okay. I think that's it. Have anything further? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners? We can vote on this one right now?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? We have a second, any further conditions, qualifications or comments?
We need comments from the.
Hold on, hold on one second, yes?
We have a motion on the floor there.
We have a motion on the floor, we, we asked for public comment already.
Yeah, this is Engel, I'm just saying, we, when we make a motion, we have to give.
Hold on one second, sorry.
I cannot hear the presentation very well at all.
Yeah.
They're not talking into my microphone, something is wrong. It's a shame because I really wanted to hear.
Okay, do you have something to say on the application?
Yeah.
You do, okay.
Did you say I was supposed to wait?
No, I asked for public comment and no one responded.
Oh, yes, I did, I raised my hand.
Okay. So do we, how do we do this now?
Was there a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute, I raised my hand for public comment.
We did not see you raise your hand, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, you do not have these microphones on the room, do you love, you couldn't hear you say that, you mumbled for public comment. And then in the same sentence went on to.
Find it hard to believe that I mumble because I'm pretty articulate and loud most of the time.
I'm sorry, I, I did send him a.
Letter, we spoke about it.
Part of the hearing, that I could hear a little bit, I would like to just comment to that solo.
Okay, why don't we pull back the motion?
Yes.
We'll open it back up for public comment, I would ask you to come to the podium or come to this table.
I do just want to clarify for Commissioner Engel and everyone else, because this is a site plan, no notice was required, public comment is not required, you are welcome to hear public comment, but I just want to be clear, public comment was not a requirement to close the application.
Understood.
Are you ready, is it, is it okay to go ahead?
State, state your name and address.
Yes, this is Terry Spring, 24 Garrish Lane, and I represent Cody Real Estate, I'm the managing member of the group. I'm not here to necessarily oppose this application. What I'm concerned about is getting some time. Continuance, if possible, because of two reasons, first of all, the notice was sent to the wrong address. And I only got it sometime last week when it was forwarded. I tried to absorb it, but did discover that because of the. Smallness of the area, that it's very, very difficult to understand without a utility plan. Where all the equipment is going to go, I heard vaguely on the roof and whatever, but I think it's important to us. Because I did hear also that the boundary lines of the buildings and the boundary line of a shared right of way. Are very close together, so. It's been that way for years, I think when our buildings were built and the bank building was built. I think that you could build to the property line. And I think perhaps it should be, I think perhaps the actual property line is the. Actual edge of the right of way, which would mean that anyone coming out of that door on the southerly elevation. Would be stepping into a very busy right of way. The purpose of the right of way was to provide access back and forth between the two properties. And I think it's dangerous, you know, to. I don't think that the spaces are accurate, I think the curbing. Maybe. You can look at your photo and I come up with the accurate measurements by looking at it a little bit. The beginning of the, the top of the accessway is about 15 feet. It narrows to about 12 or 13. After there was an addition put on the old, the old bank, it was added and it's, so it narrows. And it makes additional complications. So I would like to be able to sit down with an attorney and look at the bounds and the property lines. And I would like to know where transformers and I think I saw air conditioning units and access also from the southern. Right along the, possibly right along the. Access where it narrows, so. I think without this information, you know, we just need a continuance. I have no objection to apartments that they can fit in. I take the applicant at his word that there are, could be not more than eight cars and they'll park elsewhere. But I don't, it's a very tight spot. And it can be very dangerous because people, our buildings have. Rear entrances, however, pedestrians going other places and to our buildings. Use it back and forth with little kids and everything else, it is very tight, a very tight spot. So I do have concerns about that, and I would hope that you could maybe get information on the. On where the, all these things are going to go, because. I think that my understanding is it is going to be a restaurant, it says commercial, it's been approved as a restaurant space in the past. And I see no why, no reason why it shouldn't continue, but the fact is, whether it's commercial. Or a restaurant, you have garbage, you have a handicap lift, you have propane tanks. I mean, it's a very, very crowded space, and then it has maybe two parking spaces. I think it's about the size of a badminton court, probably 22 feet in the back. And I think it may be hard against the actual right of way. So I, I just. Wonder if we could get information and a little more time, thank you very much.
Thank you. So just to reiterate what. I'm sorry, can you hear me? I just want to make sure you can hear me too.
I'm sorry.
Will they hear me?
My what?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I would just like to make clear, maybe you did not hear the applicant earlier and I apologize, they may have not been speaking clearly enough. But what they made clear was that they were not modifying anything to do with the curbing or the right of way. That is represented on the site plan and that the door that is coming out, the new door. Is not going into the right of way, but onto their property into the planting area.
Well, I don't think that's possible because the curbing may be within the right of way already.
According to the Class A2 survey that they submitted, it's not in the.
I see that, I see that, I question the validity of it, I would like to ask an attorney because I'm not a surveyor. And even if it were, how could people be backing up into landscaping and over a curb and then into a driveway? And it is a shared driveway to our tenants. And we guarantee it in our leases, we always have, that's actually why it was set up. Was to provide access to the rear of the property for parking and for rear entrances to our stores.
I understand, but.
It's also a busy drive up and a cash machine, it gets worse every minute. And.
To, to repeat what I just said, making sure you hear me. Repeat what I just said and what the applicant said is they are not making any change to the width of the right of way, nor to any of the curbing. That is part of that right of way boundary.
Well, how could someone get in the side door?
There, you have to look, I'm sorry, but you have to look at the site plan.
I have, and it looks.
What they submitted and, and inspect the area in front of that side door that they're proposing.
They said they were going to have the side door?
Again, you have to look at the application.
I looked at it online just as quickly, you know, quickly, but I did get the notice late and.
I don't think, was the public noticed on this?
Notice was not required for this because it was a site plan application.
Right, so notice was not sent to all the, all the neighbors because it's a site plan application, you may have gotten a notice from the adjacent.
Yes, I did, I just got a notice, it was a notice, but it was, it was very late and it was, it was always also forwarded, went one place.
Right, so what I would recommend is you speak to the neighbor, obviously, there's been some discourse going on with, with the owner of the property. What I heard represented by them is that there will be no equipment at all on the right of way side of the building. That if there's any gas meters or electric meters required, some of which might have to be inside the building, I'm just repeating what they said. That those meters would be on the back of the building that has no impact on the right of way. And that HVAC equipment would be on the roof, again, does not impact the right of way.
And, and so there was, there was also, I also saw access stairs and access to AC equipment. And that was on the southern elevation, southern side of the building, close to the entrance to the parking lot. I saw there, there is an indication that there is. Also access to AC.
I, I don't know what, I apologize, I don't know what you're looking at, I would recommend you look at the drawings that were submitted because that's not on the drawings.
Well, it was on, it was online.
Looking at it online.
Really? Okay, okay, I stand corrected, but it seems to me that I saw it there. Where would the air conditioning units be?
Okay. Thank you for your, for your comments.
Okay, but is it possible we could see those before you approve it?
They're not required.
Utility isn't, doesn't speak to the appropriateness of the location?
No, we, we, as a planning and zoning commission, don't have oversight as to the utilities coming into a site. How the utility company will regulate that, where they're going to bring them, we don't. We don't have control over that, utility company does. And that would be something that the applicant, and possibly with your input, would have to discuss with the utility company on how it's going to be positioned. There's all types of other laws that come into effect that we, we don't weigh in on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No further public comment. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Seconded already, or seconded again.
Thank you. Any further comments or conditions?
It's important that we give a reason when we make a motion for the court, so this isn't overturned.
Understood.
So I wanted to give some reasoning, but I don't want to step on people who made the motions to us. I'm happy to see this building that's been underutilized for quite a long time find an adaptive reuse. And I think that what's being proposed here meets pretty perfectly the purpose of the Retail A Zone, where we say that we want to have residential uses on the upper floors, particularly in existing structures, so that such buildings, which may be historic or architecturally significant, can contribute to smaller unit housing resources, thereby providing for diversity in housing choices and opportunity. And I think that this project does exactly that.
I would also like to put a condition on the approval. Again, reiterating what the applicant stated was their intent, and also to address Ms. Spring's concern that the south elevation facing the right-of-way not have any mechanical equipment, utility meters, utility equipment on that elevation that could impact the right-of-way, and that the existing curbing place not be modified in terms of how it impacts the right-of-way.
I amend my motion to incorporate those conditions.
Thank you. Anything further?
I also adopt the reasoning that was put forward.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything further? Okay, call to vote, Dan Rodman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Bob Nag?
Yes.
Alan Swirlo?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
Eric Knowles?
Yes.
This application is approved. Okay. Shooting into the regular meeting.
Public hearing.
Sorry, a public hearing. And commissioners, as you can tell, we're trying to stick to our timing on many of these items. We're close, only about 15 minutes off. So we're doing well. First public hearing item. This is 564 South Avenue. Upon application of Christopher Shoud, authorized agent for New Canaan, New Canaan Commercial.
New Canaan Community YMCA.
It's abbreviated. New Canaan Community YMCA Incorporated, owner for a site plan and special permit approval pursuant to Section 3.7.1.2. D, to allow for an increase of maximum building coverage to allow for the installation of a CHP generator and battery energy storage system at the New Canaan YMCA in one-acre zone at 564 South Avenue, MAP 36, Block 232, Lot K62.
Thank you.
Second, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Hi. If you're going to discuss and deliberate, could you do it outside in the conference room, quiet, while the applicant's presenting? Thank you. Go ahead.
Able to share your screen.
Okay.
One second, thank you. All right. Meeting, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Brian Smith. I'm attorney with Robinson &amp; Co. We are here representing the Canaan Community YMCA, Inc., which is the owner and the applicant for the property at 564 South Avenue. And we're here tonight for a special permit and a site plan. The special permit is to expand the amount of building coverage by a little over 400 square feet. And the purpose of it is to install a 285-kilowatt CHP generator system with a 688-kilowatt battery energy storage system, the microgrid controller, the full electrical and thermal connections, pumps and controls. And the purpose of this, and the site is shown here. If you'll see the site is the YMCA building. If you're familiar with its location on the southerly side in the back is where the current propane tanks are buried and has served the YMCA, but they're no longer going to be functioning, haven't been functioning for about a year. And the purpose, we're going to instead install the CHP generator in that location. It'll vastly increase the resiliency and the, and reduce the cost to the Y of generating its power for its own location. And one of the most important features of this, it will also be allowed to be serving as the first emergency shelter for the town of New Canaan. There has been conditions and approvals for that by the town. So just, and that's the location where that's going to be installed, in the same location where the propane tanks were. Getting a little closer was a, a, just a cut, cut of the landscape plan of what is existing and what, or what will be provided in the future. But under Section 3.7.1.2. D, the Planning and Zoning Commission may, by special permit, increase the permitted building coverage from, by up to 6% of the total lot size. There has been a history, there's been some expansion already. But we are, this, this additional expansion will only be approximately 1%, and we are still well under the 6% total that we would be allowed to have. And the installation of the CHP generator would serve both the daily needs of the New Canaan Y, as well as, as I said before, to serve as an emergency shelter for the community. There is no, currently no existing town facility presently able to accommodate an emergency shelter. The town and the Canaan Y have already entered into contracts whereby the New Canaan YMCA has committed to serving as the town's emergency shelter. And the town has approved a grant of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to assist the Y with financing the project. Now, the, the details of it. We move to the next, you can see, here's the picture, sort of general picture of the, of the YMCA, looking from the back of it. And if you look into the, sort of the center, you can see Arbor Vitae against the, the building just on the, to the left of the white area of the wall. And that's, that's the back of, of the location. You can see the playground that exists. Now, that's a slightly closer view. And that would be, that's a view of how it would look after the installation is completed. The, the main difference would be that the, the Arbor Vitae, the plan is to remove them temporarily, protect them, and then reinstall them after we install the CHP generator. The fencing, instead of being the current four-foot cyclone fence, would be an eight-foot slatted fence, which would further screen the view of it from anywhere on the property or adjacent properties. Now, here is the, this is an existing condition of that location. So it's, you can see the Arbor Vitae, and you can see a little gate in the, in between, under, just under the tree that is in the front of it. There's a gate that's a cyclone fence that allowed access to the propane tanks. After completion of the proposal, this is what that site would look like in terms of the Arbor Vitae would be replaced via a green slatted fence. So there's virtually no change, except it's, it's even more subtle than what it currently exists. Here's another view of...
Can you go back to that image real quick? Is that... Hard to tell, I have to call up the pictures as well. But is that the muffler on top of the generator visible?
I, I think the, well, it's not, it's, it would be visible from like that. Just, that's an accurate depiction of what you would see.
Okay.
Now, this is a, another current existing conditions. Looking from, you know, further towards the front where the parking lot of the YMCA is to the...
Go back to the previous slide. What's the height of the fence and what's the height?
Height of the fence is eight feet in, in that location. And then the, so the proposed height, overall height of the structure would be, it's about... Mark Robbins.
Okay, good evening, Mark Robbins with MHR Development, owner's representative. So I can try to answer specific questions about the equipment, various heights.
So I think what I'm trying to get at is... So I guess my, my question, kind of building on, I think my colleague's question is that you can see a fair amount of the, the equipment beyond the fence there, and I was just trying to understand the scale. So what I heard earlier was eight feet. And then what I'm guessing, those Arbor Vitae are, you know, medium juvenile Arbor Vitae. So they're probably, what, 12 feet? But they can get up to 18 or 20 feet.
So could I, could I jump in really quick? I don't, I don't know if this will address everyone's questions or not, but I know the applicant has not gotten through all their presentation, and these renderings are from the view of the Y's parking lot. Later in their presentation, they have photos from Putnam Road. So I don't know if your concerns are...
I can, I can, I can, I can pull back and we'll...
That's good.
I can review it later, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if we didn't clarify. This is literally from the, the Y's parking lot on the side. And I, I want to go through a little bit more here on that. So here's another, again, this is the, this is the sidewalk of the parking, that serves a parking lot. It's not the sidewalk of the street adjacent to the, of their property. So this is another view of the existing. And that's would be the view that you would see after it's been instructed, if it's approved. And here is the view from the street that you were, I may have been wondering about. This is the view actually from Putnam Road, looking in towards the Y. There's a, as you may recall, over the years, the YMCA has been asked to, has provided a considerable amount of screening along its borders. So there is actually a berm in place there along with the trees and, and, you know, various shrubs and trees already existing. And that, that's all the photos I have. But what I would next like to do is to explain the, the, one, one of the main benefits of this is the town function. And Margaret Riley is the executive director of the YMCA, can explain in more detail what that is and how that would benefit the town as, as well as the YMCA.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us your time this evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Margaret Riley, I'm the executive director. And also with me on behalf of the YMCA this evening is Chris Polley, the Y, the chair of the Y's board, and Mark Rzeczkowski, the chair of our finance committee and treasurer. Also related to this application on Zoom is Russ Keims, the town's emergency management director, who was integral in our planning to become a town shelter. The Y is very proud of all of the work that we do with and for the town. We provide discounts to town employees, school district employees, and first responders. The town police department is currently using our YMCA free of charge while their building is being renovated. We're at the home pool to the, to the schools, high school, boys and girls swim and dive teams. The high school launch program comes to the Y regularly and uses our facility for their physical education classes. We offer free exercise classes at the town library, and we have twice served as the town's emergency shelter during periods of long power outages. We all remember storms Irene and Sandy, where there were extensive power outages in town. And the Y served as the town's emergency shelter that was voluntary and free of charge to the town. But each time that it was necessary for the Y to source, transport, hook up, and fuel a diesel generator in order to make that possible. So that, that effort that we made to be the town shelter brings us to tonight's application. In 2022, the Y embarked on a sustainability project. We switched our lighting to LED lightings. We put in four EV chargers in our parking lot. We've made upgrades to our HVAC systems. And this project that we're here for this evening is the core of that initiative. It's the purchase of a CHP engine, which I think many of you may be familiar with. CHP is combined heat and power. It's a, an engine that uses natural gas to produce electricity on-site. So that will take the Y largely off of the town's power grid, which reduces the burden to the grid significantly. The machine, when it produces electricity, outputs heat, and it captures that heat, so it's extremely efficient. We can use that heat to warm rooms and even pool water at the Y. So we really will accomplish a lot. At the same time that we were doing our feasibility study with respect to this CHP project, we made an application to the town for an allocation of ARPA funds. We knew that if the town supported the project, we could upgrade our CHP engine to one that functions off-grid and would, would be, would work during power outages. So it's a, a special capability that this type of CHP unit has. And that would mean that the Y would have on-site a machine that we would use every day to make us a more sustainable Y, and then readily available to immediately act as the town's emergency shelter when those, when that became necessary. So, and, and if, if you have any questions with respect to how we will function as, as an emergency shelter, as I mentioned, Russ Keims is here this evening on Zoom. He will tell you that we, once we determine that we could function as a shelter, we then engineered our project to make sure that when there were power outages, we would be able to provide electricity to the areas that the town would need to, to use as an emergency shelter. Our gymnasium, certainly, the locker rooms and the showers, the cafe that we have, so that we, we know for a fact that once this is hooked up, we'll have the capability to make those spaces available to the town. We went through all of the levels of government with our application for ARPA funds, the First Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the Town Council. It was unanimously approved, and we were awarded an allocation of $500,000 in ARPA funds. Recently, we were also very pleased to have the New Canaan Community Foundation's support for our project, and they awarded a very generous grant to the Y for this project as well. We have recently signed contracts with the First Selectmen. One is for the allocation of the ARPA funds, and the other is essentially for the Y to surrender its property to the town at the time that the town needs an emergency shelter. It's for no charge to the, to the town. And literally, the town would come on-site and operate our facility for the town's benefit. So clearly, this is a project that benefits absolutely everyone in the town. We are proud and happy to do it. We think that this is the, this type of CHP unit would be perfect in terms of its ability to generate during power outages, to generate power during power outages. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
As far as the use of the generator, did I hear you correctly? This generator will be working, functioning and operating all the time?
So yes, it will generate the Y's electricity, up to 80% of our electricity on a daily basis, allowing us to be more sustainable and come off of the, of the town's grid. Yes, that's how often CHP units work. There are many Y's that have them. There are many buildings in town that have them. I believe this is one of them, actually, that functions in part with CHP power.
So what is the noise output of the generator unit?
I can have Mark Robbins speak to that about the... We did provide late today, unfortunately. But we knew that there was an inquiry after our application was submitted with respect to the noise that would be generated. So we did provide some information this evening that will speak to that specifically. It's, it's nothing near what like a, an emergency generator provides. In fact, as I said, there are many in use right now in town.
Also, the materials are not on the website. In case anyone's looking, I, I got them too late to be able to post them online.
So, Mark Robbins, to address the question of decibel output noise from the machine. So... So it's a very quiet machine and to put that in context. As Margaret mentioned, there is a, um, CHP system here in the basement of this building. We have one recently installed and operating behind the Lapham Community Center, Wavine Park. There's one at the water treatment plant facility and one behind the public works garage. There's also a larger one, uh, V8 engine based unit at Saks Middle School. This is a six cylinder, um, version of that, but of a different scale. And unlike those that I mentioned, this is going to be, um, enclosed in a container and a sound suppressed container. So it's, um, about the size of a shipping container, eight feet tall. And, um, it can be serviced and accessed with access doors, uh, from the outside. So it benefits from sound suppression. Uh, by virtue of the fact that it's actually in a, in a container. Um, so to give you some points of reference of how noisy it may be. Um, we look at, um, partial versus full loading at 60 cycles. And then we look at various setbacks. Um, in the, uh, study, in the acoustic study. Uh, that, uh, begins at the, the first point of measurement, which was 10 meters, which brings you just off the grassy knoll. Into the beginning of the YMCA's parking lot. And so that's, uh, uh, just over 30 feet away. Decibel output at full tilt is about 58 decibels or the sound equivalent to a dishwasher. And, uh, we, uh, in addition to the noise for the CHP output, um, you asked, there is balance of plant, there are other components. So there's the battery system, inverter, transformer and so forth. So we analyzed the, um, noise output of all of that equipment. And continued the analysis to the closest property line, which brought us to, so that's the, the receptor, if you will. That brings us to approximately 216 feet from the unit. And without any sound suppression or attenuation. The full tilt noise output from all of that equipment, if you will, is a fraction over 45 decibels. And the 45 decibel is the, um, the, um, noise ordinance threshold. Uh, for New Canaan in this zone. And that study was done without attributing any benefits to the existing Arbor Vitae. Or the fact that we're increasing the enclosure from what's right now a four foot open chain link fence. To an eight foot perimeter fence that will be a solid fence slatted fence. And we're going to be applying a sound blanket strategically in one section. And that has the, uh, so that's applied, uh, literally like a blanket to the inside of the eight foot fence. And that is the net effect of reducing the decibels at the closest point of concern or the closest property. Uh, by about four decibels, which brings it under the quiet evening threshold. So, um, and again, point of reference, the sound that a Bosch dishwasher would make, um, at the closest point.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mark. I just wanted to, um, point out that, uh, section 36A dash three. The town council ordinance puts a noise ordinance that, uh, New Canaan has. And so we studied that and I, I. I have physical copies if anyone would like that. Um, I don't know, but in any event, the section B of that talks about. Uh, it talks about motorized equipment or machinery and engines, and then a long list of what they are, including generators. Uh, and they have, they may not operate at the following time periods such noise from those. And anything that exceeds 45 DBA measured at the receptors property lines, what Mr. Robbins just mentioned. That would be Mondays to Fridays before 7:00 AM or after 7:00 PM. Saturdays, Sundays are federal holidays between 8:00 AM and, or after 6:00 PM. Sundays before 10:00 AM or after 4:00 PM. Uh, with the sound blanket, with the, what we are proposing. We would certainly accept as a condition of the special permit that that noise ordinance must be adhered to. And that it will be so that, that, uh, and then the, and the. Placement of the sound blank would be required to do that. We would certainly accept that as a condition of approval to ensure that we are meeting. The noise ordinance requirements of the town.
So this is a, Mr. Knowles, so I, I just, just to clarify what, what you said, the distance to the nearest receptor. But you said it was 216 feet and I'm looking at your survey and I'm looking to the property line. I believe on Putnam Road and it's 163 feet. So.
Yeah, so it's 163 feet to the closest property lines. It's the southern property line. And then to the receptor, which is the closest, um, abutting property, if you will, that's across the street. So that's approximately 40 feet, uh, additional across the street. So we looked the, the closest points of reference being, uh, 158 and 172 Putnam Road.
There. 163 is to, to the edge of our, of the YMCA's property line. But the receptor, the, the ordinance talks about is the next, next door neighbor who was actually across the street on Putnam. So that's where the additional footage comes from, the, the linear distance.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, a question if I may. Um, has the applicant considered perhaps, um, something other than a slided chain link fence, a board fence or something to make, you know, cut the. Noise even a little bit more? Is that something that's possible or needed?
Well, and. It's not needed, uh, because, um, it is extremely quiet and that's, um, this was, we commissioned this study in connection with the sighting council. Application and a full environmental assessment. And this was a component of that. And, um, unbiasedly received the results back and it indicated again at full tilt. If the batteries were being discharged through the inverter and the CHP unit was recharging them. All of which would unlikely even happen in an evening period because the batteries are discharged to address peak charges that occur. On the hottest days, you know, in the middle of the day, peak hours. But, but that being said. Um, with the very limited sound blanket, which is, um, occupying. Uh, we could sort of walk you through it onsite. There's a good exhibit in the report that was addressed, but just a small section, strategic, strategically located, small section. Um, opposing the inverter. Um, it has the effect of bringing us, uh, three and a half decibels below the threshold for evening, uh, tolerance of noise. So. It's not, um, needed. Visual impact, if I may, if you go back to the picture with the, um, I guess muffler that's, uh, just proud of the top of the fence.
Um, let me see if I can get to that. This one?
Yeah, um, speak to the, the, with, um, the ventilation components that are outside the box, if you will. Um, so. The, uh, so what you're seeing above the box, so the box is approximately eight feet. It does sit proud of the grade by a few inches because it's on a concrete pad. And, but if it wasn't for that few inches, it would reconcile with the top of the eight foot fence. So the, the box or the CHP unit. Which you're not going to see because it's in a box, um, but the CHP unit wouldn't be seen. What's sticking above the eight foot height and this vantage point was taken from standing at six feet in the parking lot. Approximately 30 feet away. So, uh, the property, the closest residential properties, if you will, 158, 172 Putnam. Um, we have an image that you could see what they would see, which is really nothing at all. Uh, because there's a very dense and developed landscape buffer on top of a berm. And you'd have to be seeing through the existing property, um, fence, which is a cedar fence. Before you, and then travel another hundred feet and get up the hill and then see through the Arbor Vitae and, and, um, the eight foot fence. But what you do see here is a exhaust intake. So there's a fresh air intake and cooling, um, component to it. And a lot of thought went into this, um, over the last six months with the Y to custom engineer what we called a low profile application. Um, more typically you would see, uh, the snorkels or it looks like a candy cane. Goes up and over fresh air intake and exhaust facing the parking lot. We, uh, worked with a. Uh, HVAC designer, mechanical engineer to come up with an apparatus that is low profile, reduces the overall height. Um, as along with a exhaust attenuator and that's running, uh, perpendicular as opposed to vertically. So it's a, um, uh, isolation muffler. Um, on the exhaust and it's all designed to be very ultra low profile. Frankly, the Arbor Vitae that were stock images digitally, uh, for the rendering. Are more about 12 feet tall and what's there now giant Arbor Vitae, uh, to their name, they've grown to about 14 or 15 feet. They're continuing. So. Existing Arbor Vitae are actually more mature than are indicated there. We have submitted a landscape plan that, um, indicates we're going to be supplementing the existing screening with additional, um, in, in, in kind plantings.
Uh, final question, um, as memory serves, um, um, some time ago. Um, there were some issues regarding the, um, call it, um, landscape buffer between your buildings and some neighbors where some of the plants had died or were not thriving. And it was trying to replace them to the, I guess, the status quo ante. Um, how was that going?
It was resolved and Ms. Carrie came out and did a subsequent investigation after we did some additional planting and found it to be satisfactory.
So the, the picture, the photograph you showed, if you can go to the Putnam.
Go back to it.
Would include any of those new plantings and so forth that, um, you, uh, refreshed. So this is a. Shows all that being installed and, oh, good. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Swerdlow?
So this is not, what I'm going to ask you is not a critique of what you posed, but I'm just curious about. The fact that you have five masses, massive, uh, flat roofs with full sun. Yeah, you're, you're ready for this question, right? Why, why have you, did you explore in your, uh, analysis of this using solar and let's say geothermal? To provide the same kind of cooling and heating?
Um, we, although it looks like we have a lot of flat roofs, we don't actually have a lot of flat roof space. Um, so Mark Robbins has also done a lot of analysis of our facility to see if solar is an option for us. We think that there's one roof that we could potentially use, but it's somewhat slanted. Um, so we'll need a special application if we are to use solar. Um, so it's, it's not as easy as it could be. Um, also this type of system will, will allow us to, um, reduce significantly. The electricity that we're using because it will generate up to 80% of our daily use. Um, which is a lot, um, with three pools and a large facility to heat and cool. Um, so I, I don't think a solar system could accommodate as much as this system can.
Well, not by itself, but with ge- geothermal it could. Uh, I, um, remember your Y, it's terrific facility. So this is not a critique, but I, I'm looking at five flats, flat roofs here and I was just curious about.
Yeah, we did, we did not explore geothermal.
Um, can you just repeat? You mentioned what the, based on the current generator specification. And muffler and everything else, you had a decibel reading at 10 meters. What was that?
So the, the, the TETM cut sheets, uh, that were provided to the board, um, I'm referring to that. So it's about 58, 58. So TETM is the manufacturer, uh, of the equipment. And so you might've received a copy of the manufacturer spec cut sheet. And there's, uh, the first page, it's highlighted in yellow, um, under the letters.
The commission does not have this document right now. So.
Oh, 58 decibels is the answer to your question.
Bulls at 10 meters.
Yes.
And that takes into account. Not the sound blankets, it takes into account strictly the engine and the muffler and the, the current configuration that's specked.
Um, is that correct? So it, it is specific to the 58 decibels at 10 meter measurement that I'm referring to is specific to just the CHP system. Not the balance of plant, which would include the batteries in the inverter.
No, understood. I'm, I'm specifically referring to the generator. Okay. And so at 10 meters, which is 30 feet. And then it goes to 45 decibels. You said at 200 and something feet?
Very rough math. It's cut in half. Once we get to about 160 feet. And it's cut down further for that piece of equipment, for any given piece of equipment. It's cut down by about total 60% by the time it gets to the first, um, receptor, which we're talking about. The 116 or 117 feet being the two, either of the two closest properties, 158 to.
214.
200 and.
14 feet. It's not 160.
Right, did I say 100? Right. So, so what we did in the, what was done in the acoustic analysis. Is took the summation of all of the equipment so that right now we're, we're putting, we're proposing to put the equipment. In an existing mechanical area that's already enclosed with the chain link fence and the R providing. So, um, repurposing that existing mechanical enclosure, if you will. From that point, we, um, had an analysis done that looked at the noise output of all components. So the cooler, the fresh air intake, the CHP unit and a, a, a condition where the battery would be deployed, inverters and so forth. And, um, looked at. The decibel output at the first closest nearest property line, which was, uh, 216 feet. And untreated, assuming there was no eight foot chain link fence slatted or not slatted and no Arbor Vitae. Which both the, the Arbor Vitae does exist and no sound blanket, which is being proposed. But assuming none of that, that it was just the bare equipment at full power. The noise reading is 45.6 decibels. And the threshold is 45. When we introduce just a little bit of a sound curtain. On, um, little less than one half of just one of the three, uh, elevations there. It reduced the sound pressure, this, the, the decibel reading down to 42.9. Uh, just with a, a section of sound curtain, which was sort of strategically hung on the inside of the eight foot chain link fence. Um, uh, opposing where the, the inverter was. So we found it's very effective, uh, this sound curtain. I would suppose that even without the sound curtain, if we ran the model. And just imputed the existing Arbor Vitae and a slatted chain link fence. We would get below the 45 decibel threshold because right now with all of the equipment at full tilt. And not assuming the fence or any Arbor Vitae were at 40, uh, 45.6. So we just would need, if we really, you know, um, um. Being, uh, you know, very strict about that, we could probably just by imputing the sound suppression by that existing landscaping in the fence. Get to below the 45. We're talking about less than one decibel.
Um, also, uh, given the planting plan, uh, this is the planting plan that Kinsley put together. Landscape plan. You have the, um, access doors to the corral, the access doors in the fence. Facing the south elevation, on the south elevation. Is there any flexibility of moving those to the north elevation in that back corner and then having a continuous row of plantings? Or does that present some sort of problem?
Right up against the building, right?
Rather than having the missing tooth of Arbor Vitae.
Right. Yeah. So it's kind of interesting. I was, um, if you, we have two photographs. We've been existing condition photograph in this presentation. Um, which I think is good to kind of look at and illustrate your point about the missing tooth. Uh, so.
There, okay.
Is that the, uh?
It's one of them.
That's one of them. So to the right, uh, so yeah, you see the space between the R providers. That's existing condition right now.
Yep.
Four foot chain link fence, no slats. Um, and then when we, uh, introduce the eight foot slatted fence. And we move to, um, rendering world. Uh, so the missing tooth is gone. If you would, uh, accept the green of the fence being same green as the other.
No, I understand that, but the difference is you now have equipment that's taller than the fence. And that missing tooth is providing a clear view into that top mounted equipment. All of them, it's chain link fence. All I'm suggesting is relocating the door so that you could have a continuous row of Arbor Vitae there. Just to help mitigate that.
So without.
I just don't.
You know, making a commitment on behalf of engineering, yeah, I fully see where you're going with that and, and.
I just don't know if it presents an access problem like they need it in a certain location. Are you just taking advantage of its current location? We want you guys to confirm that.
So we need, so we need to think about service access setback, mechanical setback. And how the container is oriented. So the, the access to the equipment from, from the sides, so kind of it's, it's an interesting point to look at. And I'm not really in a position to, because there's code consideration and so forth, but I appreciate what you're saying. And also sort of thought about when we do replant the arboretum, if some consideration could be given to staggering them. And perhaps or offsetting one proximate to the door without impacting the requisite, you know, flow of traffic, because we want to make sure that this is easily accessible and easily serviced. So we don't want to frustrate that process, but.
Before you all get too deep into, you know, recommending potential changes, do you want to confirm if there are any members of the public that have concerns, you know, with the proposal or the, you know, before you get too concerned about noise complaints and whatnot?
Yeah, we can. I just wanted to. Yeah, I just wanted to give mission or input before we went to public.
Understood. I just.
Could do it. I think you could do it.
I have another line of questioning.
Feel free.
Yeah, I think, I mean.
Done.
You're coming. Okay. I just another line of questioning, just with regard to the P O C D, CD consistency. So one thing that I want to thank you for the partnership with the town, and I think it's a great partnership and I appreciate everything the Y does. So I appreciate your stable. It's very helpful. So thank you for that. One of the things that we have as commissioners is a duty to talk about the consistency of these investments with the P S C D. And I saw that it was stated that it would be, but I just wanted a little more specifics and sort of metrics as to that. So I saw the town is contributing the $500,000 ARPA funds to that. Is that the full cost of the investment? Or is that half of it? Or you don't have to give me specifics, but I was just curious, is that a substantial portion of the investment?
About a quarter.
Quarter. Okay. Thank you. And then is the ownership of the equipment for the Y, the Y is going to own the equipment moving forward? And then what's the useful life of the equipment if it's a $2 million investment? And I, I looked at the CHP. I know you're an expert, but it looks like there's combustion turbines, reciprocating, you know, gas turbines, steam turbines, micro turbines, and they have different useful lives. So I was curious, is this a, you mentioned six pistons. I'm assuming this is a reciprocating CHP.
Right. So a lot hinges on maintenance, you know, keeping up with maintenance, oil changes and the like. So a lot of components to it, but generally speaking, properly maintain service contract, 20 years useful life. So throughout that 20 year period, there is a rhythm of anticipated components to be replaced in service. But generally speaking, it's, it's 20 years and the same for the battery. There is a degradation factor built in, but these are LFP batteries, not the cobalt batteries. So it's a lithium phosphate battery and they, they, there's a cabinet with cells that can be replaced if one starts to degrade or fail. And provided that's done, the useful life of the battery assemblage also is about 20 years.
Okay. So basically the amateur has that straight line. It's a hundred thousand dollars a year in, you know, depreciation per year. And then you're also highlighting that it has the, the benefit of having this resiliency during a storm event. And you're also saying that it has a cost savings over the kilowatt hour rates of the grid. Is that correct? So in, in theory, that a hundred thousand dollars you're recusing against both the savings of the, you know, grid power cost versus the locally generated cost, you know, combined with the, the heating elements. And then you're also saying it has a benefit because of the resiliency that's worth X dollars. If you were to have to ship in a diesel generator.
Yes.
So that's the, that's the business case.
Right. Whereas a diesel generator would only be used as a standby emergency generator. And this is serving us every day for resiliency purposes and.
Right. No, it makes sense. I just want to make sure I understood that from, okay. And, okay, so the, from the, the P O C D, it's building more resiliency into the grid, you know, for those storm events, plus it's saving energy and diversifying our energy mix as a town.
Exactly. And then there's a whole very compelling carbon reduction systemic, you know, system wide as well as at the point of generation reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and.
Yeah. I mean, that, so from a, like a, I don't know if that's the right term, from like a smokestack on a scrubber perspective, like will this be producing and distributing, you know, exhaust gases that, you know, versus having them produced down on another location? Can you just speak to that and how they're dispersed and?
Right. So.
Catalytic converter and that type of.
That's it. Right. So pretty sophisticated catalytic converter exceeds the, both the federal and the state, the US EPA and the DEEP in Connecticut emissions. Putting in perspective, this is going to generate heat with less impact to the immediate environment than operating their current gas fired, you know, non condensing boilers right now.
Okay.
So.
So the comparison to the current boiler system used to create the same output is actually worse today than it would be with this future state.
Right. Yep. And so what you're, you're, you're shifting the paradigm there. So instead of using natural gas to generate heat, we're using it to generate electricity. And the waste heat from the engine, instead of dissipating it with a radiator or up a stack, we're recapturing it through a heat exchanger to heat the ambient air, swimming pool, domestic hot water and so forth. So we're switching our needs for natural gas from heating to generating electricity. But we're recapturing the waste heat. So there's one benefit. And the, because as you mentioned, the type of catalytic converter boiler systems don't have that. This does. So the overall, not the N2 emissions, right? The overall greenhouse gas emissions profile as well as NOx and CO2 is significantly less than operating their boiler. So cleaner air for the community. And because of the battery, we didn't oversize the CHP unit, we right sized it. And we use the battery to address potential peaks, demand peaks. And by offsetting, by using the battery versus the grid for those peaks, those peaks occur, you know, during the hottest day in the summer, that the marginal emissions avoided is actually cleaner because the times in the summer when we have the grid stressed, they're lighting up those peaker plants and those are actually the dirtiest power sources in the grid. That's when we're getting away from like, you know, you mentioned natural gas or nuclear and those may be even, you know, coal or plant. So we're avoiding the marginal. So very compelling clean energy story here.
And Commissioner Russ Kimes, Emergency Management Director, just to add into that, it is very important to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, the, the generators that we trucked into the YMCA, the times that they very thankfully were willing to act as shelter for us as community. That's a competitive market at the time where hurricane is coming and everyone is trying to do the same things versus having onsite capabilities. And also being green and being able to sustain and also take load off the grid at the end of the day.
Okay.
I'd like to just remind us of two things at this point as it's just hitting nine o'clock. Number one, we allotted about 30 minutes for this application. We've been on it for 45, just in terms of timing. And secondly, they're here before us for coverage exception. So we've gotten into a lot of details about sound and how this all works. But really the point of this is a minor change in their coverage.
Good point. Is there anything further on your side in terms of presentation?
Very much for consideration. And we're here to answer any additional questions you may have.
I just have one quick question, just back on the noise and I know this going to quality of life and public health safety out there. So you, I assume with the, and I could be wrong with the ARPA funded, you did an environmental assessment or the, the funding through NEPA. Is that, is that where you get the, the noise analysis from or, or, because you, because you mentioned a few times about the noise analysis. I was trying to understand what the genesis of, of where that's from.
So thank you for asking that question. Siting council, the Connecticut Siting Council, any system with a battery of any size, the CHP system doesn't have to go to citing council if it's less than a megawatt. This is 285 KW. So we're, we're a battery of any size falls under this commercial application, not residential, but any non residential battery of any size technically has to go before citing council. And the deliverable there is an environmental assessment, very high standard. So we, large cast involved in that, you know, environmental assessment, archaeological. There was a reflectivity analysis that went to the FAA acoustic study, for example. So it was pretty strict standards, but I, I keep excited by this. And when you ask sort of overall sort of noise, we have to look at it as a system approach, right? Because the building currently has two boiler systems, two different, they have a steam and a hot water system, a collection of 20 different rooftop units there, several strobic fans, so a lot of equipment. But the net effect after it's operational, I think the building will be quieter than it is now. It'll be quieter than it is now because the current systems have noise associated with the boiler. And then that boiler that's running to heat water 12 months out of the year requires a multi stack cooling tower to cool the buildings that aren't being, the spaces that aren't being heated. All of this becomes a much more environmentally efficient and quiet operation allows them to back away from use of their boiler system and their cooling system. And the net effect after this is installed, I pause, it will be a quieter overall complex.
To go back and just touch on what Ms. Nielsen just brought up. This application is specific to the increase in maximum building coverage.
That's correct.
Can you just please reiterate the increase numbers here?
It is approximately 407 square feet of increase in the building coverage, even though there's more area being involved. But the concrete pad, certain pad is not counted in the coverage. It's the area where the unit is going to be inserted. That is the covers that is being counted. And that's what we determined. It's approximately 407 square feet, believe.
So the pad is not counted because they're using existing concrete pad, correct? But where? So, so if I may, and we, we studied this pretty carefully with the assistance of staff. So the ask here is an increase of coverage of less than 1%. Numerically, it's about 406 square feet. And where that comes from is so in, in, in New Canaan, the concrete pad, if you will, is looked at like a patio or other impervious area like a driveway. It's not calculated. It, it doesn't factor as coverage in connection with zoning. It would impact, you know, drainage and so forth. So what does fall into the calculus of the ask for additional coverage is any equipment that's greater than 10 feet from the adjacent building wall. So we created a table and we looked at the actual footprint of the DC blocks, the CHP unit, the inverter, anything that's not attached to the building that's 10 feet from the building and the total footprint there is about 406 feet.
Got it.
Yeah. And so that less than 1%.
I rounded up. To be safe.
Commissioners, anything further on this?
Nope.
You guys are good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, that would like to speak to this application. We're wanting Zoom world. Thank you very much. Application's closed. Discussion and consideration of the request of David Rucci, Lampert, Tuie and Rucci LLC authorized agent for downtown New Canaan LLC to amend the zoning regulations dated June 16th, 2007, amended June 28th, 2024 to amend section 4.2. D. Point five residential dwelling units subject to inclusionary zoning per section 7.6. C. Complete copy of proposed amendment on file and town has put in a town office, in the office of the town clerk and also planning and zoning on this web link.
Said it's a book tonight.
Viral binding even. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission Members. David Rucci, representing the applicant this evening. And you all know this application, or at least have been really important in us developing this application based on the fact that we were here both for pre, pre hearing applications on the 30th of April and May 28th. So we got a lot of good comments and really helped us streamline our process.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to be reviewing number eight at the same time? Should we mention that?
Should hear both applications at the same.
Okay. So let me, let me just read that item as well for the record.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item number eight upon application of David Rucci, Lampert, Tuie, Rucci LLC authorized agent for downtown New Canaan LLC, owners for the site plan and special permit approval pursuant to section 8.2. B, 4.2. D. Point five, 7.6. C and 7.7 to allow the renovation of an existing structure to permit the conversion of office and retail space into residential dwelling units and permit an additional, an addition on a historic structure in retail A zone at 112 Main Street MAP T, block 74, lot 94. Mr. Rucci.
Okay. No problem. So as I was saying, we've been here before twice for pre application hearings. And it's been very helpful for us to put together our application. This evening I'm joined by Grant Stevens and Daniel McHeckern. They're the basically developers of the property. They're contract purchasers for downtown New Canaan, which is one of the Silverbird properties. And this is obviously, as you guys know, the property that has sort of the gratings on the front and has, I think, kind of get muffin on the first floor and a tea store on the first floor. And the other units are, I think, empty right now. We also have with us Rich Granoff, who is the architect. We have Redness and me and the civil engineers, Langen did our traffic. And then we have Todd Bryant, who was our historian, our consultant on this. And we also have Francis Development for Pre Construction Services. Fortunately, since we have been through this a number of different times, I think that we can, you know, we will definitely touch on, on what we're asking for, what we need and, and go through those and obviously get into whatever weeds you want to get into with it. But notwithstanding that, if we can put up, oh, do you have it up?
Trying.
Okay. Just go to Zoom and then share your screen. So this is a two and a half story building right now in the retail A zone. It was built somewhere around 1880 and eventually was rebuilt again in 1899 after a fire. The panels on the front were put on sometime around 1965. The site's about a quarter acre, about point two four acres, about 10,262 square feet. You may recall that it faces Main Street, but it also has access off East Avenue. There's a, there's a driveway there and there's parking in the rear right now. The, the use of the building right now is, as I said, has five retail ground store units. It has 10 smaller offices that are on the second floor. They're about 500 square feet each. And then altogether, the gross area of those two floors are about 12,000 square feet. And if you take in the basement and the attic, it comes out to about 24,292 square feet. We're proposing to renovate, proposing to upgrade this, proposing to expand the footprint. We want to replace the commercial use with the, with the residential use essentially on the, basically throughout the building. The first floor in the front will still maintain, it'll still be retail on the front. But we're going to build out the back of this particular piece of property. And we're going to add three residential units on the first floor. Two of those units will be affordable housing units. One's a one bedroom unit, one's a two bedroom unit. And then there'll be a market rate unit as well on that particular floor. The first floor units are going to have ceiling heights of about 11.6 feet. The second floor about 10 feet. And then the fourth floor has two units on the top of that, on the top of this building. Altogether, when, when we, if we're able to get. we're able to get this proposal approved by the commission, we'll have about 31,000 square feet of new floor area, including an underground garage. And that garage will have 14 spaces in the garage. The building itself will be ADA compliant, be highly efficient. It's going to have new HVAC, new water heaters, all new kitchen appliances, new electrical plumbing. There's going to be elevators servicing the floor, elevator servicing all the floors, two fire staircases, fire sprinklers throughout the building. And as I said, onsite covered garage parking with at least 14 spots and with two electrical vehicle chargers, some handicap accessible parking also in there in that space and bicycle storage and trash collection are all going to be put on the, on the rear of this particular building. If you go to, so if, yes, so if you go to page seven, I think it is, we have, sorry, page eight, this is sort of a flow chart that we put together as to what we're going to need to, to essentially accomplish our purposes for this. We'll need a text amendment on the property to essentially allow three, to allow units on the first floor, which so, so far in the retail A is not allowed. Units also cannot be larger than 750 square feet. You heard that in an application earlier this evening. And then also you can't have more than one bedroom unit in the retail A zone. So we're looking for a text amendment. And specifically with that text amendment, it would really only apply to inclusionary zone. So it wouldn't apply to the rest of the retail A zone per se. So the application that you heard earlier this evening, they would have to be, that would have to be for an inclusionary zoning for them to essentially have a first floor bedroom unit, have something more than 750 square feet or more than one bedroom. So it is specific to inclusionary zone. And I think that's important because, you know, even if someone came in with an 830G application, they may be able to sort of get around that rule anyway. So we're trying to be more consistent with the Canaan regs. We use the New Canaan regs. We wanted to use the New Canaan regs. And we thought it was important to come in underneath this particular reg and not obviously go the route that some other people have chosen to go. Once we go through the text amendment, we'll talk a little about the special permits, inclusionary zoning in and of itself requires a special permit. So that will be something that we'll talk about. And then as I said about this fourth floor, we are looking to increase the area on the fourth floor or the half story. It can be increased up to 75%. Right now it's only 50%. We need to designate this building as a historic structure under 7.7. And we'll, we have a historian that's put together a, a presentation that's, that's within your submission and we'll talk about that as well. And then once we get through that, we'll obviously go through a site plan approval and show the, the entire pro, the entire project. So if we skip to the text amendment here, this is what I sort of touched on before. And I think with Ms. Chairman, I'll just go through the whole application and then we can come back to certain questions and not stop at text change or whatever unless, unless you want me to do that, however you want to do it. But I just feel I'll go through the whole thing. We'll see it all. And then we can go back and answer, answer any questions that you may have. So retail A zone, this is what we were talking about a little bit before, under 4.2C, it basically states that you can't have a unit on the first floor. You can't have a unit that has more than 750 square feet. And you can't have a unit that has more than one bedroom. Those are the ones that are specific to this. And then if you go to 4.2D5, it says this will also apply to 7.6C, which is the inclusionary zoning. So what we wanted to propose as a text amendment on page 12 of your book is essentially saying, listen, you know, just take out that last sentence that we wouldn't have to comply with those particular units so long as there's something that the commission can look at from a special permit perspective. And what we, you know, this is the language that we came up with was essentially that the commission finds that units contribute to the variety of housing choices, design elements of the project, the quality of design, relationship to the other buildings in the area, and obviously keeping an intent with the retail A zone. That was sort of our catchall as far as what the commission can use. And I think it gives you a lot of leeway and leverage in looking at these particular applications. So in this particular case, as I said, we are looking for units larger than that. The first floor units are all over 1,000 square feet. And two of them, one of them is a two bedroom. But throughout the whole building, there are others that are more than two bedrooms. I'm on page 16 essentially now. So to bring a special permit under 7.6C, you can go up to a building height of 45 feet. We're requesting to do that. You can also go up to three and a half stories. We're actually going to be going to three and a half stories and then also asking you under 7.7, our historic district that we get more, that we get up to four feet, uh, four stories, but it will still know, be no higher than 45 feet. So we're not going higher than 45 feet regardless, but we are adding a half story to the building. That is our request. As we went, as we go through, once again, here's sort of your first look at what these units look like on page 17. As far as you see the storefronts have been sort of cut back in the, the retail storefronts have been cut back. They, they now go to the end, but we're also building off the back now. So we're adding additional square footage to the rear of this building to create these units. And you'll see that we have one, two bedroom unit with the two, two bath, which we thought was important. That's about 1,070 square feet. We have another one bedroom with the den. That's about 1,058 square feet on the bottom. And then we have one market rate unit. And then you'll see this sort of hatched area on the side there, you know, potentially later, that could be something. It could be a gym. It could be some sort of storage here. Maybe we can even add it to the residential unit. Obviously, we'd have to come back to you for that. But in case there's an ability to, you know, utilize that space in the back, we've just wanted to show it to you now. So it wouldn't be a surprise later on for some reason. Page 18 is just giving you an overall view of what all these different floors look like, what the square footages are on the floors. You can see that in total, we have two one red bedrooms with the den, two two bedrooms, two, two bedrooms with, I'm sorry, five two bedrooms with the den and then four three bedrooms with the den. So that's essentially what this site is going to hopefully look like from the residential perspective. If we move through, we go to preservation historic structures, and this is what we're, we're requesting to get this additional space on the fourth floor. In order to do this, as many of you know, we have to show that this building has some historic significance. And specifically, we need to show the commission's over 75 years old, which is not going to be a hard poll here, and exemplify or reflect its broad cultural, political, economic, social history of the nation identified with historic persons and important events. This was, we had, we asked Todd Bryant from Heritage Resources to help us. And he submitted a, a, a document to you to, to prove this. And, you know, it was interesting to go through all this. And I think it would, I was going to ask Grant Stevens, who's one of the principals to sort of talk about the preservation of this structure because he was the one who really, you know, took the bow by the horns and said, listen, I want to really know a lot about this building as part of our design. So I think I'll turn it over to Grant now if you want to talk, Grant, to sort of how you're going to go through. And then I think it would be good after that, just to sort of go into the architectural because they relate to each other as to what we're going to do next. So Grant, if you want to just take over, that'd be great.
Yes, Grant Stevens with Volterra Properties. This is kind of a package deal. So thank you for bearing with us and explaining all the pieces that have to fit together to really make this work for us. It's interesting, the ability to designate a building as historic and has significance historically. There's in the requirements, five requirements that you can pick. It's an or, 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 it's not an and, 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 and. And so we've picked two of these five criteria to say, this is a building that has significance because on item A, it really has exemplified and reflects really some broad cultural, political, economical and social history of the town. So it has within it some history that's very significant to New Canaan. And the second part, which is B, is this building also has historic personages or people that have been associated with this building that have some significance to the town. So those are the two criteria that we're using to say this building really has significance. On the first criteria, those of you who may know this building, it has had a very rich history of what has gone on in that building. The Silman General Store, the US Post Office was there for a number of years. Walter Stewart's second grocery store was in this building for a while. It has had a lot of history associated with it just by the activities and the tenants that were going on in this building, which gives it a very rich history of what happened in this area, in this building over time. One of the interesting parts of the building as it is currently designed is there's a large second floor open space. And when this was originally built, that open space was a gathering space for festivals and for activities. And one of the real, I think, significant pieces of history is the, kind of in the 1920s, the African Methodist Episcopal Church used that large space on the second floor as their meeting space. And they were there from the early 1920s to 1931 before they moved out. That became really a very significant place for the establishment of that church that is still in New Canaan, as you know. So under that designation of events that relate to this building, we're looking at that. The other one is people that were associated with, with this building. And obviously, a lot of the activities relate to those people that were really supporting and allowing those activities to occur. So William Edgar Raymond was the owner of the property. He was a very prominent businessman in New Canaan. Joseph Silman, who had his grocery store, Walter Stewart, who had his grocery store. And then the two women, Cora Scott, Mary Cantor, who established or formed the congregation that then was formalized and established as the African Methodist Episcopal Church were really a part of what was going on with this building. So we look at those two pieces of history and significance as important enough that this should be designated as historically significant. We do understand that one of the criteria also is, did this building have architectural significance or architectural value? And we purposely did not want to pick that because the facade of this building currently, as you know, doesn't have a lot of value. We're not sure what we're going to see when we peel the metal panels off the building. So what we've wanted to do is focus on what one of the members of the commission mentioned at one of our last meetings, more of an enhanced renovation, not a restoration, but an enhanced renovation of this building. We want to have an adaptive reuse to what we're going to put on this site, but wanting to be respectful of the history, wanting to be respectful of the look and feel of that building. And so that's what you'll see as we go through the architecture of this building.
Thank you, Grant. We can, we have within our present, our presentation or narrative how, how both the historic nature of it meets the POCD for a special permit and the inclusionary zone, which I can sort of recap at the end. I think the one thing also with the text change, which I failed to mention when I was talking earlier, is that the POCD in and of itself recognizes that you need to provide a range of housing choices for different incomes, different stages of life. That's on page 40. And they said, one of the strategies of accomplishing this may be to look at some of your form code rules and make a determination that, you know, maybe those don't work in this particular case. So, you know, the POC definitely recognizes under the text change portion of this, that, you know, you may have to make changes. You may have to use special permits in order to promote the strategy of accomplishing these goals of different levels of income, different housings. I mean, this housing is going to be probably more for empty nesters, senior housing, obviously affordable housing, since we have that in there as well. So I think that it gives you the ability to provide for more bedrooms, provide for larger spaces, provide for ground floor use, residential use, just based on the POCD in and of itself, because it was something that was recognized at the time. So I just wanted to put that out there because I know we're always talking about the POCD and the text change. So I want to make sure that the, the commission understood that that was certainly within their view and the POCD and would be consistent with the POCD. I think the best thing now is to go through the architecture. So maybe I'll ask Rich Granoff to, to start with that portion of the presentation, which starts about page 27 in the book that I, that I gave you. Rich, if you want to start off, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Rich Granoff, Grand of Architects. And with me tonight, I have my associate, Chris Hittola, and Chabelli Rodriguez. It's the team that worked on the project. So when we first started working on the project, we started by doing two things. We actually studied the historical photos and there was quite an extensive library that we looked at. And it was fascinating of the history that was just gone through. It was actually just as fascinating, the architectural history. But we didn't see a lot of consistency over the 150 years or whatever it was. We saw a lot of changes over the years and adaptive reuse. And we, my firm does a lot of adaptive reuse and a lot of historic restorations. We didn't feel that this was a, a structure that was a candidate for a true restoration. So what did we do? We started by looking at buildings. We studied all of Main Street. And if you go to page 28, so thank you. You know, we saw a, a kind of a mixed bag, I would say, of architecture, but some of the consistency was a brick structures, stone trim on those structures. We saw a lot of archtop windows. We saw strong cornices. So those were the kind of, the main takeaways. And if you look at the next page, you can see what I'm talking about with the existing architecture. Obviously, in the 60s, it was bastardized pretty, pretty poorly, especially on the Main Street facade. And in, on, on the back of the building, it's a, you know, indescripted brick structure, but still those arch windows were a, the brick and the arch windows are really the characteristics. So I can quickly take you through the plans. We don't have to dwell on them. The garage level, we're turning it into a garage level is accessed off East Avenue. There's a vehicular entrance, which takes you into a lower level garage. We got 13 or 14 parking spaces. You know, there's a, a lobby down there for the owners or the renters, I should say, with elevator access up. And then a second means of egress. If you go to the first floor for Main Street, you have the existing retail, we're maintaining all the storefronts in their current locations. And then you have a pedestrian and visitor access, a lobby with a, with a mailroom. And then, as was discussed, there are three proposed apartments on the eastern side of the building. So even though it is at, at the retail level, it is on the back of the building. And walking down Main Street, you would not know that there are apartments in the building on that floor. And then if we go to the next page, the second and third levels are identical. You've got five units per floor. So there's three on the first floor, four, sorry, four, four, the second and third. And then if we go to the, the top floor, proposing to two larger units, penthouse units, if you will, that are set back with, with these terraces. And as I'll show you, you would barely see them, if not see them at all, walking down Main Street. So rooftop is, is flat, just some skylights and elevator override. So now we're looking at the, at the west and east elevations. We have renderings, which are probably better to look at, but. We have renderings which are probably better to look at, but I think you can uh, see, especially on the on the west elevation, the the strong retail base, which was another feature of uh, Main Street that we felt was important to maintain. We're proposing to clad that in a cast stone. Uh, the the brick, you know, main body of the building with the with the arch windows, as mentioned, and the heavy heavy cornice, which is also another feature on Main Street. And then the the uh, the penthouse, which is set back significantly. And we'll see in the renderings, it doesn't really look like this in real life. Back of the building, um, you can see how the um, the uh, parking, um, which is um, not fully enclosed, but it's got fencing for mechanical equipment that we're hiding. And you see a three stories of uh, of of brick. We've toned down the detailing a little bit in the back as per what it was existing historically, the the Main Street facades had the bigger cornice and were more ornate. So we're specifically doing that um, in the in the back of this building. There's just a sliver of the facade you see on the um, on this, on the north. Um, again, we'll look at the renderings, same detailing there and uh, materials palette, um, as mentioned, it's it's basically a brick building uh, with cast stone. Detailing uh, around the windows and and a cast stone. It's um, everything else is relatively superfluous um, on this page.
Dan McCracken of Full Terra Properties. I just want to make note of the fact that Mr. Knowles raised the question about the lot line windows. And though it's not addressed in the zoning, it is addressed in Connecticut State Building Code and they're not allowed, which Grenoff Architects were kind enough to point out to us the first day we met with him. So this image on the top of this page thirty-six is actually meant to show what are today existing windows on the south side of the building that will get closed up.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Good catch. Thanks for bringing it to us.
Um, and I'm do that also find it, I'll call it like the penthouse story because it's setback or?
It on the north, on the north and south sides where you have the zero lot line, you, we have those as solid. I think
because the penthouse I thought was setback from the
It's it's setback on the east and west, but not on the north and south. See that in one sec. Uh, so on page thirty-eight, um, is is a very good diagram showing the cross section, um, which shows a pedestrian across the street and that because of the setback of the top floor, you 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 don't see it. And I think the renderings will all will show that um, as well. And
So just, sorry, on that one cross section, you'll see that that cornice that we're adding really becomes the parapet for that balcony. So you've lifted kind of a parapet up higher than the roof line necessarily. And so that hides both what's going on behind as the fourth floor, as well as creates more of a comfortable area for people to
So that that parapet line is a new parapet line?
Yes.
Not the existing?
There there is not a parapet on the building today. They took it, they took the parapet off when they
Off, yeah. Yeah, when they It's just metal panel all the way up.
Yeah. And and the proposed cornice is a is a very important fe- feature for uh, for a number of reasons, Main Street, and it it appears as a three-story building. The next page is very, it really says it.
Just to um, I guess, remind myself and the rest of the commissioners, I think some of your early schematics had that, had a lower parapet and had a glass rail up there. Is that correct? Okay, so
It was, yeah, a very preliminary design, that it was, yes.
Anymore, we're depending on the parapet to act as the guardrail.
Yep.
Yes, I think there was some concern about visibility of what was going on on the patio.
Yep.
So we've made that solid and incorporated the design feature of the cornice and kind of killed two birds with one stone.
Yeah, and this this image, I think, s- says that very well. That you don't see the um, what's going on on the terrace, A, and and B, the the actual uh, structure behind it. And um, the the next, the next series we're going to show you from the sides shows that as well.
Now wa- watch this because this is really interesting, the before and then the after. It gives you the scale of what's there now versus what happens. So you can see what really is the difference in massing and scale just by looking at what that rendering does.
One thing I I I wanted to highlight and I appreciate is the the structure of the the retail units. You know, I like, one of the nice things about Main Street is the it's called like the boutique nature of some of the stores that they're kind of, you know, smaller. And I like the fact that you've kept five units. I see the left unit. Let's call it the northern unit. I imagine you potentially could combine the two is what it seems to be portrayed as, but I like the the fact that you've kind of changed up and mixed up the cadence. It 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 seems to me or the other, is that intentional in terms of the way, or do you plan to have macro or larger?
No, it's
Commercial units?
It's a great question. And I actually, I actually have a handout. Is it okay to distribute a handout? Because there are, there are, believe it or not, with those five units, there are thirteen different ways you could configure them by consolidating two that are side by side, three that are side by side. So you actually, we actually have tremendous flexibility to go from quite small units, which may be appropriate for certain users, to actually quite, quite large. And even if we we or a future owner ever after the lease expires in the south unit, which is the spice and tea exchange today, even if some of that space in the back is captured back, there are still nine different iterations with the five spaces in the front that you could you could work with to accommodate different tenants of different sizes over time. So today, between those five units, there are brick walls that separate them. And we're going to either create large openings or take the brick out entirely. And then to the extent we need to close them back up, just use drywall to close them up, which gives you much easier flexibility to expand or contract them in the future.
I'm just, I'm going to add a little bit of color to this facade and the five units. What we were given was the entry at one twelve main. That was a a given from a circulation standpoint and the existing five stores, which there was no rhyme or reason at all geometrically as to the spacing and what was there, but we accepted it. We put a strong horizontal uh, base there. And then we we started to um, investigate how can we create order on the facade above, which started with the one twelfth main. And that's where we developed the three-part scheme above and broke that down further into the pairs of pairs of windows, but and and I think it's successful, if I might say so. But if you look at the retail stores, you're like, what's going on here? There's like, there's no, they're all different widths. And we would never design a new building like that. So in effect, you kind of intuitively think that must have been there for a long time. Yeah.
Great improvement over what you showed us last time, which you admitted was preliminary and just placeholder. Though I'm just a little concerned about the historic preservation angle. I'm looking at a nineteen ten photograph of the building. And I don't see any relationship whatsoever between what was there and what, and you said you examined lots of photographs and what you've designed, uh, which is very handsome. I like what you've designed. And I like the fact that you've created the uh, terrace as an inset rather than on on level, so that most of that activity will be hidden. But if you could just describe how you took inspiration from the historic aspects of a building from the turn of the last century?
And that that's a good question. And we we had a lot of internal debate about what we should bring from the past and what didn't make sense. Um, and and this is one of the many iterations that you have a whole file of of the historic photos. The building morphed over over the years. So when I look at that rendering or or photo, I see a very strong base. And then something different going on above. And I I think the essence of the, you know, base with something else above is the two different uses, right? And and I think this was a a hall at one, at one
Were we talking about this rendering?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, what we just handed out was the only drawing that we could find of the building before the fire. So this is what the building looked like originally before the fire. Some of the photographs that you've seen in the report, the historical report, was after the fire. Um, so what we've worked with Rich and his team to say, the original design was actually a lot better than the second post-fire design. Uh, it had a little bit of rhythm to it and consistency where the post-fire looked like they put it up very quickly just to get it back up and running. So we've taken probably more architectural liberties from the original design than the post-fire design. The post-fire design has some very strong vertical fenestrations that you see. And there are reminiscent vertical elements in the design of the brick that are inset that we're trying to respond back to that. The the fact that we're putting the cornice back on, I think the fact that we're looking at um, restoring the kind of just the Raymond building plaque that's on there right now to recognize that was the Raymond building and still is the Raymond building.
That's that's in the dead center of the of the facade. I forgot to point that out. Thank you.
Is that a recreation of an of a an actual plaque or something that you've just imagined?
It's actually still on the building.
It's the actual
The actual plaque from when it was rebuilt after the fire. So it's on the building today and we want to restore that
Dead, dead center. We actually designed this
Mister, Mister Raymond was a really a very accomplished uh, impressive man. He oversaw the design and construction of this first building that was built in eighteen eighty. He then passed away in eighteen ninety, but he had a substantial estate and he had trustees set up who were empowered to run his estate, which included the creation of the Raymond Fund that the Congregational Church still runs today. There's still, to this day, there are three Yale Divinity students who are given stipends of fourteen thousand dollars a year each to travel around the state and preach to get practice preaching, which is pretty amazing. And that that endowment was largely funded when this building was sold early in the twentieth century. But when it, when after the fire happened, the best we can figure out portions of the buildings that stood on the site survived the fire, but not all of them. The trustees, without Mr. Raymond's frankly, good taste in architecture, I think, hired a builder and said, replace a building as quickly and cheaply as you can and work with what is there. And you ended up with kind of a not great architectural design as a result when it was built in eighteen ninety-nine. So we we really have tried to use the original building and buildings built around nineteen hundred, eighteen ninety-nine that to to develop our scheme here.
Just my last comment on this is, uh, I think you've uh, you've actually developed quite a handsome contemporary building that has historic references to it. What I really like about it is the fact that the base, the commercial aspects of it look like they've been added to at a certain point. So the building is not completely contemporary. Uh, what I have some concerns about are the uh, or is the addition to to the top. And in terms of how it's really going to present itself in terms of different materials, different colors, different designs. Uh, not that it should be the same. I'm just trying to wrap my head around how that is going to actually work uh, in terms of the street view. The street view is not as from, you know, as a uh, a facade from the front, it's from every single angle, walking around and so on. So that's, that's my only concern with what you've presented here. I think in general, what you've done is very admirable.
Can I ask about the parking? So um, of course, uh, how many spaces are there? How many parking spaces are there in the garage?
Fourteen.
And and there are thirteen units?
Correct.
And so uh, each person gets one unit, one, and then there's one for a visitor?
Uh, yes, that's the idea. And including the the affordable units, we each get a a space. The affordable units would each get a space as well. So yes, each unit gets one space. And then there, there is a handicapped accessible space which can either be visitor or or if there's a resident who needs that space, that would be an assigned space. Then there'd be another space available for visitors.
Uh, in this case, uh, you know, unlike that earlier one where we just had a few units and most of these, the idea here is seven, if, we're not going to have that many people living on the second floor, but in your case, it's going to be more substantial and it could be with three bedrooms, it could be a family in there and it could be uh, three cars or four cars uh, in a family. So where uh, you know, where do you think the other peo- the other cars will go?
I'll just jump in really quickly to remind the commission that because this is retail A, there is no parking requirement. So while you know, if the commission finds this to be a helpful exercise, we should continue, but you cannot require that they have any certain number of parking spaces because there are no requirements.
I understand, but what he's proposing is, uh, he's got some standards here. He he's changing the rules. And he, there are some vague standards about what we uh, should consider. And I'm not, and I, and uh, I'm thinking that it might include the question of whether uh, this would clog up the existing parking lots. So it, well, the residents would be parking their cars in the where otherwise people would be parking to go shopping. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah, no, fair question. Uh, the best I can answer is, I would like to think that people moving into the building would challenge themselves on whether they actually need two cars if they're living downtown. They're walking distance to the train station. And it, they will not be inexpensive apartments. Frankly, if the people, people may have second homes and leave one vehicle there. Uh, or if it comes down to it, they will have the wherewithal to find a place where they can can rent a, a second space that's not on the property would be the best I can
I mean, in the end, every unit's only going to get one spot. So they're not going to be able to take two or three cars, even if they have two or three cars. They will have to, you know, just like these other, the application we heard earlier today, they're going to have a challenge to try to find some parking and hopefully they'll be able to do so. It'll be the same with us.
I have another question unrelated. Could you just go over what the benefits to you uh, are for, you know, getting historical uh, designation?
It 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 basically comes down to the historical designation allows the commission, if it if it deems it appropriate, to increase by up to, increase or decrease by up to seventy-five percent, any dimensional requirements. What what we're, so as of right, uh, we could build a half floor, fifty percent of the floor area on the fourth floor with a flat roof and a and a square building. If we went up, if we, if we were approved for a full seventy-five percent increase, seventy-five percent increase over fifty percent actually takes you to eighty, almost eighty-seven percent. But we're asking instead for seventy-five percent. So the the math actually is that we're asking for a fifty percent increase in what would otherwise be as a right, rather than up to the seventy-five percent that that the uh, language would allow you to approve if you, if you deemed it appropriate. So it frankly, it's not, it's not a very big change in our view, but it will make a a real difference because of the expense of the overall project. And obviously, the top two units should be very high income generating units. To have the bigger units will really help the economics work overall, which I think is the intent of that flexibility and the historic designation provision.
This commissioner Chris, just a maybe a few observations. And I I thought this was a very handsome building myself. I'm looking at the second floor, which is really maybe a double height floor. I don't know what, but in very high ceilings. Um, certainly would not be difficult to make it appropriate for residential, uh, frankly. And and so uh, replicating this type of fenestration would probably be awkward. Uh, I I think the renderings you have are um, it's it's a major improvement of what we got now, I will say so. Um, not the most handsome building we have downtown. It's a very important part of our downtown. The preservation of uh, diverse smaller shops at grade and in a very important retail area, I plus, I see is very positive. I, and I do hear you on the economic necessity of a fourth floor. Yes, that's the premium product. You have the terrace, which is a premium feature of a premium product. So I I I kind of get, I get all that, why that's that's necessary. I'm still, oh, I'm still thinking about, similar to Commissioners Fairlove of about, you know, exactly how it should be designed and maybe building materials. I'm not quite not quite there yet. I'm I'm not against it. I'm not necessarily for it. But um, I think the fenestration here is very appropriate. And both the, and the um, Main Street side as well as the, the back of the building, certainly an improvement. So uh, I I I see this as a distinct plus for the town, uh, frankly. And um, I um, I'm still perplexed on the three bedrooms and a rental, but you know, I guess you've done research on why that's going to work, so I'll I'll defer to you. But um, I I do have one, one, maybe a safety issue moving But I, I do have one, one, maybe a safety issue moving on the, in, in many apartments, when you have a a terrace, let's say, or a balcony, there are limits on what you can do there. And you can't have a cold charcoal barbecue or something like this for safety reasons. I'm just wondering any restrictions there that may have to do with health and safety concerns? If you could share any thoughts?
Can I take that?
Sure, please.
The advantage of having rental units is the landlord can dictate what the rules are of that. If it was a condo, it would be a lot more difficult, to be honest. So we appreciate the fact that we do not want to have charcoal grills. I mean, we don't have gas in this building at all. This is going to be an all electric building. So electric grills are great. And if they want to have an electric grill out on their patio, that would be great. But we really want to make this as a safe, comfortable apartment, rental apartment project. And how we manage that and how we create the rules and regulations for that is going to be very important.
Also, one of the things that people have on sort of patios or terraces or decks are tables and chairs for sitting outside, fair enough, but also they can put umbrellas and things like that up, which could affect the, the visibility from the street. Also, you got a large gust of wind can take umbrellas all kinds of places, even if they're very heavy and pretty well anchored. So again, a sort of visual and a safety issue, I'm, I'm wondering what thoughts you may have, may have on this topic to deal with that.
It, it's definitely something we'll want to address and I think we'll have language that gives the landlord a fair amount of latitude to to approve the use of furniture and umbrellas and so forth. And I agree with you about the potential risk of umbrellas. We were just a couple of months ago with our daughter and son-in-law and a giant umbrella they had in the backyard blew over. Fortunately, my large son-in-law grabbed it and held it while we jumped up to help him, but it, it can be kind of scary. And so you wouldn't want that up there. So I, the, the short answer, as Grant said, is the advantages as landlord, you can pretty much write the rules and have the ability to enforce them. And I, I'd like to think that people moving into these units would be sensible. And if you're going to have furniture out on a, on a terrace like this, as we did at the Black Rock headquarters in New York, you get very heavy furniture. So it's not going to blow around.
Thank you.
I would, this is Dan Radman, Chairman. I would like to say that it's a little deceiving using this image as a reference point for anything historical. It is, you know, an etching or a drawing prior to the fire and it only represents probably two thirds of the building volume and mass. And quite frankly, I don't see why we would try to use it for reference on any architectural detailing associated with this application. There is more current, I'm looking at an image that's probably from the nineteen twenties of that building that is more relevant in terms of the scale and proportion and cornice work and everything else that your reinvented version of the historical artifact is more closely tied to this than it is to this. So I, I think you've done a, a great job with this. The, the one thing I share, my chairman, my commission members concern over one thing, which is the fourth floor, not necessarily the setbacks or the scale or the viewpoints, but the, the view that you have up on screen right now, which is the south elevation and whether or not that upper level is coplanar with the brick level below, right? In plan it is. I know why it is because you're maximizing square footage, but I think architecturally in terms of what that will look like, you, it might behoove you to pull that facade of the fourth floor in a little bit to distinguish it from the rest of the building and let the brick do its own thing. Just a suggestion. And one other question, isn't the rid, the existing brick on the building like a mustard yellow? So are we re-cladding the entire building?
So are we?
No, it's all going to be new. We're, we're taking off the bricks there.
We are. So it's all new brick.
On the front facade. We, we think actually that the yellow is a detailed band that goes across the center. If you look at, if you look at the nineteen ten image, you can see that it's lighter colored and then darker above.
On the sides.
I mean, we'll, we'll find out when we take the aluminum off, but our conclusion is that so much reworking has to be done for the windows and everything else.
Yeah, you're reworking all the punctured, punched openings anyway.
Brick facade off and rebuild it anyway.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to follow up on what Dan is talking about because, because I've been looking at that. The connection, the coplanar connection between the gray material, whatever that is and the reddish brick. And I know in terms of historic preservation ideology, if you're doing something different on the fourth floor, it has to distinguish itself as that. But really this is a new building. So in my, my opinion. And I would, if I was playing with this, I would see what it would look like if you actually ran the brick itself all the way through to the fourth floor without a, without a side element to distinguish between the two. And just then analyze it based on these two different types of proposals or ways of, you know, thinking. Because I'm not so sure that connecting the fourth floor to the third floor visually is, is a bad idea. I know if this was an existing building, historic preservationists would say that you would have to totally distinguish the fourth from the third and the second floor, but this is not, this is a new building.
That's a great comment and we actually studied it both ways and we decided that we like this version better, but we're open minded about that point. And the same that Mr. Radman said about coplanar or stepping it backwards. It's nuanced and I, I understand that, but the narrative is this building was here and that fourth floor was added. That's the story, if you will. And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that we debated it and we can certainly show it to you with red brick, coplanar, not coplanar. There's, you know, it's nuanced, but we looked, we looked at it both ways. As well as the yellowish brick, to be honest. We did a quick study on that and everybody said, we don't like that.
Commissioner Chris.
On our side.
Commissioner Chris, to follow up on Commissioners Fairloes' comments, I, I agree. It's sort of a new building. There's, it's gone through so many remodelings. I'm not sure there's a sort of, you can return to something frankly. And it also went through a major fire, which, okay, that happened and that changes things. So it's certainly an older building as far as its guts, which is going to remain. And it, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the historical usage of, of the building, which is, which is, I think, important. And I, I, I think that the architectural renderings you have, such as the one you're showing here, I think are, are sympathetic to a hundred or so year old building as far as materials and, and look. So again, there, there's no sort of back to, there's back to nowhere as far as trying to put it back on, on its feet. And so you have to sort of do the best you can with the cards that are being dealt. It's also my recollection from your prior visits to us that the front of the building is not struck, is not structural, is just a skin. So redoing that is a relatively, a, a more straightforward affair than if you're dealing with structural elements where you got to keep the building upright. I think that's correct.
That is correct.
And given that it's a residential as opposed to a commercial, the whole fenestration will need to be different, I would think. So that people have, you know, sunlight in their rooms. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to that, but it, it looks like a very handsome building to me and one that's consistent with sort of a historic designation. It's just my initial take.
We did do a lot of looking at other buildings in Fairfield County built around this time. And Danbury is one that has a couple dozen buildings at least that have very similar facades, including the Union Savings Bank in downtown Danbury. So it's, we really were trying to shoot for something that looked as though it could have been built, albeit a slightly more modern version, but built around nineteen hundred.
Okay. In the interest of keeping this moving, Mr. Rucci, is there anything else you want to touch on? There's a traffic report in here.
Do we have the traffic?
Yeah.
Oh, Langen. So Langen did the traffic report and they can just briefly go through it. You may want to just look at page forty four two of the presentation because that sort of shows the entry sway into the back of the property. And then after that, they have the, the parking data. I mean, essentially they came up with the fact that it's going to be, you know, a less intensive use to a certain extent than people coming in and out who are using it for commercial purposes or for office use. Because you generally have people who come and stay and walk, which is really important from where this is going to be, rather than people who are coming and leave, coming and going every day, you know, home or, or to work, you know, coming to work and leaving from work at certain peak times. But who do we have on from Langen? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know if you have any specific questions for the traffic report, but the conclusion, which is up on the screen now basically is that traffic to and from the new facility will not have a measurable impact on traffic and safety operations in the area, according to their analysis. And they said furthermore, the addition of below grade parking, which allows more parking now than there is today, or in the new parking than there is today. But that addition of below grade parking and the proposed mix of uses should enhance the parking conditions along Main Street.
I just, I would go back to my questions. Right now you don't have occupancy by residential persons, right? And if you have, if I'm, if you assume, just assume that everybody has two cars. And, you know, maybe some people have three cars and some people have one car or something. But it seems likely that there would be cars that would have to be parked on the street, parked on, parked in some parking lot somewhere or parked somewhere other than in your building. And so, you know, to suggest that, how do you conclude that it's going to improve the parking conditions? What's the basis of that?
The basis is that we have fourteen parking spaces that are dedicated to this building. And those fourteen parking spaces, looking at the traffic study in and out at peak times, is not going to be a negative impact to the traffic around this area.
Right, but, but it says it would enhance parking conditions.
Right now, if you think of the fact that right now it's commercial upstairs, it's office. Generally, you're going to have people coming in, parking on Main Street and then going up to those offices. You're not going to have that as often with residential use. And they won't generally park as long. And basically back to your question, I mean, everyone's only getting one spot. So if they have two cars, they're either not going to rent here or they're going to have some other way to figure out where to put their cars. You know, and like I, when I was growing up, person, my now mother-in-law, she used to rent her garages to David Letterman. He used to come and put his cars in their garage. So there's ways to figure out where to put your cars if you have them.
Commissioner Chris, I do have a, a parking traffic question or not parking, but traffic question. So my familiar with familiarity with East Avenue, which is of course the state highway. And it's a hill going down. And you have Forest Street cutting in there where you can't block it if you're waiting for the light, you know, it's supposed to anyway. And so it can get very crowded and you can get queues where it may take two cycles to get through the stoplight sometimes. At least that's been my experience. And people who are coming off Main Street, turning, continuing on the state highway, turning right and going down can go to fairly that's a blind corner, they can go fairly quickly. I, I'm wondering how you've thought about this as far as safe ingress and egress, perhaps prohibiting a left turn as an issue. So you don't have to cut across traffic with people going quickly. So if you want to go left, you essentially got to circle around Cherry Street. Just if you could share any thoughts on this from a safety perspective, I'd be grateful.
It has been our assumption that we'd have a, a right turn only sign as you're exiting the driveway. That's the only sensible way. It's a tough corner. There's no question. It's, it's wide, it's steep. Cars do come from both directions. It's frankly, it's hard as a pedestrian to get across. You really have to wait for the light because you just never know which direction cars are coming from. But I think exiting right turn only, we, we can try to say only enter coming downhill, but the people, if they're stopped at the stoplight and they want to turn in and there's no cars coming, I don't think there's any way to prevent them from turning left into the parking lot. But the dangerous one is you want people just exiting, going out to the right.
You'd be agreeable to having that as a condition of approval?
Yes. I think it's, I think it's pretty imperative from a safety standpoint.
Can I say where we are with this application with regard to, you know, first of all, I really appreciate the direction and all the materials today. One of the things that we sometimes get to is, you know, construction planning and lay down locations. And in, in looking at the structural document, I, I was looking at, you know, effectively, you know, your plan to remove a lot of the, the truss structures and wood frame structures and replace it with steel. And, you know, that may require a crane and then the lay down material area. Always, at what point will there be a construction lay down plan? Like, you know, with the library, they got some parking lots to, to, to do that. And is that part of this application at this timeframe or is that subsequent meeting?
So the applicant has submitted a very, you know, broad construction logistics plan. I don't think it covers all of the bases. The town engineer requires a full one before a building permit is issued. But, you know, the commission can discuss construction logistics.
It's not free. It's not, it's not a bad topic.
You're not premature in asking.
Something we can move to?
Yeah, we do, we do have a pre-construction preparation phase plan, which I can hand out. It's also in our submission.
Start to finish.
Yeah, it's also in our submission. If you want to see it.
Okay, what, what's the title of it? I apologize. I didn't see it.
It's called the Site Logistics and Safety Plan. The logistics.
I mean, for the most part, you're going to be, everything's going to be done from the rear of the property. As far as, you know, using cranes and bringing the materials, et cetera. We're going to use that back parking lot. Which is existing.
And there's, there's a good deal of text in what you've received previously that goes with those illustrations, but I thought for tonight's purposes, just seeing that.
Yeah.
Actors also looking at actually using, as the building's being built, hoisting materials up and staging it, storing it, if you will, on the floors that are under construction to get materials off the ground.
Another question, if I may, it's Commissioner Chris. Your plan to take out the two street trees as part of the construction?
That's our request. Yes, it's going to be very tough to put up a scaffold with them there. My, my personal view is the, the regal prince oaks, which is what those are, are not a terribly attractive tree. There are four of them that I've seen that are in town, three right there. And there's one down on Forest Street. But what we, what we'd like to propose is that we take them down during construction and then replace them with, with large ginkgo trees when we're finished. And we've offered to do the same for the tree that falls kind of right on the property line between the, the one twenty building, the Blue Mercury Building and the Chase Bank Building. If, if the town is amenable to that. So we would, at our expense, we would pay for, because that one is also a a regal prince oak and we'd make all three of those large ginkgo trees, if that's acceptable to the town.
That is the state right of way. So you're, you're probably at the.
Have to coordinate with the state as well. Yeah.
Again, it'd be your decision and just a suggestion, but ginkgos are Asian trees. And so there, there might be something that's still more a Connecticut tree. Because I, I think a couple of things I would think about on this is one, you don't want to bang it up against the building if it has a large crown.
Right.
That's no fun for anybody, especially the tree. And you, if it's really dense, you know, the, the residents can't see out of it and becomes, so you want something that would not deal with those issues, but there may be some other choices. So just a suggestion, you may want to think about some other choices besides a ginkgo.
Yeah, no, we'll definitely, definitely explore that. We do philosophically definitely lean towards native species that, I happen to be a big fan of ginkgos. It's one of the oldest species on the planet and they are, they're very durable in an urban environment.
On the durability and urban environment, which is another criterion. And I, I hear you on that, but just something to think about. That's all.
Yep.
Thank you.
So just in going back to the construction plan, I was looking at the text here. So it looks like you'd anticipate, you know, closing the sidewalk down during the demo of the the facade and because it, it looks like there's a fair amount of demo to bring it down.
What, what, excuse me, what we're proposing is to put a pedestrian tunnel. Similar to what they do in Manhattan all the time. So you have netting and what's being demoed above, but having the pedestrian tunnel protection so that that's still an open passageway during construction.
Okay, thank you for.
Really, we don't want to close that sidewalk off.
With all the local law. With all the local law eleven work in New York City, I mean, just about every block has that kind of a bridge and.
So I understand. I grew up. Okay, yeah.
How would you like to go forward, Mr. Rabin? Do you, do you want to, I mean, we feel like our application, unless there's other materials that the, the commission is looking for. And since we've already been here twice before, I think we're almost on like our third meeting to a certain extent. Obviously, there was much more materials given this time in our actual proposal. But I think the meat of our requests as far as our tax changes and our special permit requests. And our inclusionary zoning requests. You know, that's sort of what we wanted to talk a lot about tonight as well as the design. Are there items that the commission wants to continue, for us to continue to look at, to bring back to you? I know there was a question about the fourth floor. And whether or not there was, you know, we wanted to see red brick. This was something that we did look at. We like this design better. But if the commission feels like they need to see that before they approve this sort of design, obviously, we would bring that back to them. The other question that I saw on was, you know, whether or not we should actually be bringing shrinking a little bit, the, the east and west walls, I'm sorry, the north and south walls. If that's something that the commission is, is interested in seeing. You know, I'm not sure, or, or I guess I'll let my client talk about whether.
Yep, I, I think we'd be quite willing to look at that. And it's something we thought about as well. What I would suggest, if you're open-minded to it, is we look at pulling them back in and maybe on the back, on the east side of the building. But on the corners, we do a little bit of a, of a bump out. Maybe, sorry, so maybe the terrace in the back would would have corner units that go back and are flush just on the corners with the facade of the east side of the building, which would only be visible from the back, but it would enable you to pick up the square footage that you lose by pulling it back from the north and south. And, and move it back then to corners on the eastern, the north east and southeast corners. The front facade would need to remain as it is shown currently with ten feet back.
Well, you're here tonight with a slight advantage in that you've been in front of us twice before. So we were all very familiar with the application and the previous schematic designs that have been brought to us. So as you can tell, our questioning has been a little more focused on certain nuances and details of the design. Commissioners, I would, well, we have two things we're discussing here, right? It's the text amendment to allow the, you know, the different criteria on the seven hundred fifty square foot allowance, the one bedroom, the, you know, first floor residential, et cetera. And then it's the actual application with the design of what they're proposing to do to the building. Commissioners, how do you feel about the design modifications that have been suggested? Do we need a, do we need them to come back to us? I'll chime in. This is Commissioner Chris. I'm Chairman Rabin, you mentioned about on the fourth floor that the north and south walls would jog in a bit and not be flush with the consisting brick walls, which is an idea I like. I'm also thinking of Commissioner Sverdlov's, which is you, you make it a continuation of the wall, but it would be matching the wall. I'm kind of at a coin flip on this one. I'm not, I'm not sure where to go, but they're both appealing. I kind of like, like to see them and think about them a bit. I think they're both interesting. You know, I'm not sure where I would fall on this. With, as regards the text amendment. I, I will say, I've never been quite a fan of the seven hundred fifty square foot limit for, for downtown housing. It never, it's, it's not, it's not sort of empty nester elderly friendly. It's not family friendly. Greater flexibility, I think, would be a good thing, whether this is the time to engage in that conversation or not. It's maybe a different kind, different issue. But I'm not a fan of it. I would ask some advice from Ms. Carey regarding page twelve, though, on the proposal that you all made. Just, it provides a great deal of flexibility for the commission. I'm wondering sometimes can be so flexible, it can sort of take you places you may not want to go. But you want it flexible enough so you can make decisions. I'm wondering what her view might be on, on the wording on this and consistency with you know, other aspects of our, of our code. I'd be, I'd welcome any views you could share.
Yeah. So I mean, we, we could talk about that now. I, I do also think would be appropriate to discuss that during deliberations because again, the commission can make edits. I mean, since you did ask, I'll briefly state that I know concern has come up about what this could mean for retail A in the future. I understand that there aren't a lot of large buildings like this in retail A in general. But you know, maybe having a few more restrictions, for example, requiring that residential can't be along the frontage of the street that they border to a certain depth of the retail component to ensure you're never removing a true storefrontage and replacing it with a residential unit. That may be something the commission may want to require because as written right now, someone could meet all these requirements. And propose units in that frontage, which I don't think the commission wants.
I agree with that. I think that the applicant did a good job and is lucky with the with the cards you've been dealt that you, the, the type of building footprint where you can put them in the back and that, that works.
Well, and it actually, it would be against. I mean, I believe that residential has to be at least seven feet above the sidewalk level. And because of the grade change in the back, we're well, will be well more than seven feet above. So that's also a plus. It, in the interest, as occurs to me, if I may, in the interest of the question about whether to keep the north and south walls flush or set back visually, architecturally, I like the idea of a setback, but it occurs to me that's going to potentially create a dangerous condition. I mean, how wide is it? How do you block off? How do you keep teenagers from climbing over and walking in that narrow space? So from the standpoint of just keeping it simple and clean and you've got a well-contained terrace. I defer to architecture.
Yeah, the only thing I thought of on that point was we can just have the bricks slide by each other. So it's the, the red brick stops and the gray brick slides right past it. So because any, any, if you have a foot or two, it's just kind of an awkward, what is it?
But if it, what about if it just went straight up with red brick and it was all flush?
Well, that's, those are the two options.
Those are the options.
Well, there's two, there's two issues we're talking about here. There's the color.
Yeah.
The color change in the brick and whether it's contiguous or they're.
Well, I think the question is whether we should try to condition the and a possible approval tonight or on certain changes. Or whether we should allow you to formulate those changes and bring them back at the next meeting. Would, would that be, have I accurately characterized that, Mr. Chairman?
That's correct. And, and Ms. Carey, correct me, this is the initial submission. All the prior times they've been before us was a pre-application. So this is the, so the sixty-five day clock starts now.
Started today.
So a, a question to the applicant, would you be agreeable to coming back subsequent meeting and just refining those details that we discussed on the upper story? You know, whether it's options or a definitive decision on your part on how to articulate that and present it to us so that we can bless a final version and be clear on it.
Yeah, I think we would be very willing to come back for some conditions if we knew exactly what those conditions were, that we weren't going back and relooking at the whole architectural design again. If you have specific things that we need to refine, we're happy to do that.
Okay.
So.
Just briefly, and this was done with the library. You approved the library and then you require that they come back before a certain time with the design changes. So if if you, if the applicant needs more than just the month between meetings and the commission overall is okay with the concept. You could also just do a condition of approval that you have to come back before a building permit to refine the first fourth floor, or you could, you know.
That's a good point. Yeah. Prior to your building permit submission.
Personally helpful to us from a business perspective, frankly, with the clock ticking that we're working against.
I wouldn't be opposed to that.
I think it's a great option. I, just to circle back in terms of what you might be looking at. I, I'm very, I'm not very concerned, but you've done such a nice job to this point. It, it would be behoove you, it would be, it would be to, I think to your interest, to the town's interest to look at this as a single building, not as a historic building with an addition to the roof. I don't think that works. So whatever you do to improve the design, I think should incorporate the, the penthouse for the, what is it? The fourth floor as part of the actual building that you're designing, rather than trying to make it make believe that it's something else, because I don't think that works visually.
I, I actually disagree with you. I think articulating it differently by material and color actually helps to lessen the scale of the building by having a uniform color going in the full four stories. Gives it much more massiveness and loom over the rest of the other buildings.
Well, let's take a look at several options that they'll come back with.
Which is.
And I might end up agreeing with you. Most likely not.
I think those, I think those views you used, just play with Photoshop on those and it'll be a simple solution.
Easy to do.
Yeah. Okay. Anything further from your side?
No.
Commissioners, anything, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, I think we're good. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak to this application? Come up to the podium, state your name. Name and address and let us know what you think.
Where is my hand?
It's late. And I don't want to take a lot of your time. My name is Jennifer Ahern. I have prepared some notes which are brief to address my concerns and I'm, was hoping to have those resolved by listening to the presentation. I did have the opportunity to have a very pleasant meeting with the developer, Dan. And several weeks ago, and I did take the opportunity only recently when I saw the detail of his presentation, the present, the work that's been done. And it's obviously very well presented. I, there's, I could have a lot of opinion about it, but opinion is not irrelevant. So to let you know a little bit about who I am and why I have these feelings and these concerns, let me read through my notes so I don't take too much of your time. I'm the owner of one twenty Maine, which is the adjacent building to one twelve. The building share walls. I've been active as a landlord and retailer in New Canaan for forty-five years on both Elm and Main. I owned and operated the New Canaan toy store for sixteen years before selling. My daughter and son-in-law, who is present this evening is the owner of Shilala at one twenty Maine, the adjacent building in the lower level, which opens to grade, which is a very well-loved store in New Canaan. So one twenty Maine is occupied by both a national retailer, Blue Mercury, which is a subsidiary of Macy's, their highest performer. And Shilala, a, a local boutique where they have very strong roots in the community. So from that angle, I have two national brands as tenants with new leases in New Canaan. And including Le Pan Cotidien at eighty-one Elm Street and Blue Mercury at one twenty Maine. And I have a unique perspective as both a retired commercial broker. Landlord and a tenant myself of Old Albert Franco a long time ago. I don't know if anybody here is alive that would remember Old Al. I point this out as there is a substantial and growing demand for high street retail in both local, regional and national retail sectors. Not everybody perceives it that way and not all landlords perceive it that way, nor do all the local towns in Fairfield County perceive it that way. Although I can say I've recently negotiated leases in all of these communities, in four of the Fairfield County communities. Where the, my daughter's businesses flourish. And I'm very familiar with, with the dynamics of who's looking for what. And so to that point, the demand for this kind of retail is bolstered in part by the mass exit in malls and shopping centers, centers and quality tenants are looking to downsize or build on subsidiary brands such as Blue Mercury, which is keeping Macy's afloat. And in affluent towns like New Canaan. So there is demand landlords put up a, very often a landlord will put up a barrier to that entry. And towns will put up a barrier to that entry. But these businesses have no place to go except where people shop and where there's money. And that's why there is demand. And that's why they are coming to these communities. And there, it's why young people are starting regional businesses because it's the gated community, the gated retail community. Now.
I would just, I would just ask.
Sure.
I understand you have your notes and everything, but if you could.
Speed it up.
Get to the point.
Okay, I'm going to get to the point, but I can assure you that I, I timed myself and I'm asking for five minutes.
That's fine.
And I've been around for forty-five years. So I, I would expect your respect and I will give you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. You will note in the letter submitted by Blue Mercury, have you had the benefit of seeing the letter? There is a significant importance to the overall retail environment in making location decisions. Boutique or nationals. The reduction in size of the existing retail is not consistent, in my opinion, with square footage demand in the market. I made this point to Dan when he sort of let, put this out to me in the last minutes of our meeting. And it wasn't until I really looked at the plan that I was distressed by the, by the reduction of retail in retail A on the two streets you have. So with the square, anyway, so proposed, the proposed reduction is typical of a mixed-use built, building you see around the county. Typical of a coffee shop, food business and plenty of vacancy and turnover. You can certainly drive to the hospital and see plenty of those buildings around. And in my opinion, I think it's already been identified, this is new construction. It is not a historic renovation of any sorts. And if you want to talk about history, talk to me about history and I'll tell you about the history of New Canaan and, and its buildings. And that's going to bring me to the fact that besides the, if it makes it more difficult for the local landlords to get a tenant by devaluing the, the block where vibrancy of the neighborhood is, the retail environment is diminished, then that devalues my property. I agree with you that the building is derelict. But I don't believe that you can have an opinion about what creates the history of a building. What I, at eighty-one Elm, Elm Street, when that was built with its peak seal by Ann Taylor's in nine, in the sixties. New Canaan was appalled. When Silverberg put up those, the aluminum, they were appalled. There's no history. We, every single building in New Canaan has a story. You know, the story is irrelevant. The history, the renovation is not a renovation. It's a new building. You've already identified that. I don't have any problem with going forward. It's just, you know, renovation. The moment is now. You know, my building is a little engine that could. Nobody had imagined my building. With, which is right, I'm so dry, I have to get something from my mouth. I'm sorry. I, I'm not, I, I am concerned about a fourth floor and, and a penthouse where the kids are going to, or anyone out there is going to throw stuff down on my roof. You know, I'm concerned that my building is attached to, to that building that I'm concerned that are, we have shared walls and foundations. Be impossible to dig out that basement and not damage my building. And I recognize that the building, along with several other buildings in New Canaan, have been in transition for a number of years. And there are plenty of other people who have wanted renovate, who would wanted to renovate that building, but the price is too high and everybody in town knows it. Without putting a behemoth in the middle of town. Without putting a behemoth in the middle of town. The interest in the retail A zone to change the retail A zone, there's only two blocks in, in the retail A zone. I mean, two streets in the retail A zone. Why would you want to change the zoning and take away retail in the retail A zone? It's, it, it's incomprehensible to me. And parking. We all know that parking is a tragedy in, in, in New Canaan with people abiding by the rules. The parking lot at Chase, uh, uh, what I have been through in the last forty-five years with parking and from Burtis Ave, I have a right of way from Burtis Avenue into the Chase parking lot. The parking lot is a crisis. And if you think that people don't use it, it, it when they're not supposed to use it, it's ridiculous. You have to face that reality. That is a big problem. We have a big problem with parking in the retail A zone. And they're going to abuse it. So that's one point, which I wasn't even going to bring up, except that it was brought up, and I think you're all very well aware of that problem. So, um, I'd like to finish this by saying one twenty main was built in eighteen fifty and shares the walls and possibly some foundation. I've been hands-on during three build-outs during my forty-five-year ownership and have seen many antique surprises. For example, like removing a single board on the main street frontage and finding I was below grade in the road. I had also seen areas where we have no exterior, where one twenty main has no exterior walls other than framing and only brick of one twenty main with crossbeam supporting between the two buildings. My building was built in eighteen fifty, your, the, your renovation, after the fire was thirty years later. They attach themselves, these buildings. I, on the other side, I have the old elevator shafts from the center buildings of one of the buildings that was between them. There's a lot that goes on there. There's a tree that is the center beam of my building. So I, I did get a historic, I did get the award for my historic renovation of the building. I can tell you everything that ever happened on that block. Ten times more than what you had to say. And I can also let you know that there is I value antiques, but I don't expect anyone else to value antiques. I preserve things and renovate things because I care about them and I'm in, into it for the long run. And I'm there for my grandchildren, but that's not the town's problem. That's who I am. If the town wants to do what they want to do and develop into the modern world, that's great. You know, my little building, my little, my little engine that could is still there and they gave me an award for it that I didn't seek. But it's there. And for this to come in and compromise my building, not only just by it's the nobody even talked about what the impact of digging up that basement is going to be and what you're going to discover there that you don't know is there, that you can't possibly know that's there. That in, it, there's an endless story and you would know this attorney, Rucci, in New Canaan, there are many buried treasures in New Canaan. You see the little building that nobody highlighted over there, the little bill, the little building that could, that's in every one of your historic documents in this town, every time. That is the center of New Canaan. Elm and Main, when Elm Street was wilderness fifty, sixty years ago. It was, you couldn't even sell a piece of land up there. So you're talking about turning the center of New Canaan, taking away retail A. If you want to bring people into downtown New Canaan, people have said to me, at seven o'clock, you, you know, you could roll a bowling ball down the street of New Canaan. Well, twelve people, my tenant, Le Pen Cotidian closes at five o'clock. Why? Because it is a bedroom community. So what do what, what more can you do to the re, do you want a downtown? That's my question. So I, I heartily oppose, I, I wish them the best of luck. I would love to see the building renovated. If it was in a, at a price that could be done, I would buy the building and I would restore the building. And because it's a matter of taste. So even, even the, the metal, when they put that aluminum building, you know, you get, you're smirking at somebody's taste. That was, and, and the yellow brick, what does the yellow brick have to do with the quality of life in New Canaan? And when you speak to who's going to own it next and who's going to rent it with one car? And I, it's your business. It's not my business. My business is next door. And to make sure that my building is safe and that it is not cracked and that it isn't broken and that I don't have things thrown on the roof like I do from the, the, you know, on Elm Street. You know, and I, I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna develop my building. I'm gonna be morphed by this building. I mean, I look at it even now, it, you know, I, I'm, you know, it's New Canaan. It's the center of town. So do I sell it? I have a right of way from Burtis Avenue. Do I sell my building? And do I put up a, a four-story building there? And do I sell my building at eighty-one Elm Street and say the hell with it, my grandchildren need the money? And so I'm gonna sell that building next to the movie theater on the alley. You know, I have calls always. I'm in the center of town. And I, I, do I, do I go for the big bucks? And say, okay, I can do that. They just did that. You know, I have, I have a lot of frontage here and I have, I can go way back. I stick a couple apartments in there. I've got the parking right there. Put up a few stories and I'm winning. Yeah, I'm going to the bank. But I'm here to say I support retail in the retail A zone. And I heartily oppose the changing of that text to allow residential on the ground floor of retail. And that's my case. And I appreciate your time and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
With, with, with respect. Thank you very much.
Okay. There's someone on Zoom that would like to speak?
Yes, um, my name is Pam Robinson. I'm here with my husband, John. We are the current tenants in one twelve Main Street. We own the Spice and Tea Exchange. We opened back in May. Um, we love what you're thinking about doing to the building. Our major concern is the impact on our business, let alone the businesses around us. You're putting, talking about putting scaffolding up in the front. How many months are we not going to have business because no one's gonna want to walk across the street? When you start digging in the basement, everything in our store that's glass is gonna break. So what we're asking is protection for our business that has only been there since May. You know, we have roots in New Canaan. We wanted to be there. We want to make an impact in the community and so far we have. But our biggest concern is that we are going to be shut down permanently by this project. So we just wanted to bring it to your attention. We do love what it looks like. It definitely needs work. We all know that. But we're just concerned about the fact that we're going to be the sole retail space in there and, um, after, when this construction starts. And we don't want to be forgotten. I appreciate you letting us speak.
Understood. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in Zoom world?
I can respond at least initially to Mrs. Hearn's, um, concerns. I mean, obviously, we're not getting rid of retail. Retail is still on the first floor of this particular building. Yes, we were building out the back of the property, which is not really retail space at all. In fact, that's going to be facing, uh, the Chase parking lot. So we're not getting rid of retail at all. The retail is remaining where it is. In fact, we're enhancing the retail. And while I respect Mrs. Hearn and, and all she's done for this community, the fact of the matter is, is I've been on the Chamber of Commerce for a number of years and all we're doing is trying as hard as we can to keep retail spaces and keep people coming in for retail. This building will only enhance that as Main Street in and of itself has been a real problem with vacancies. So this particular building with its enhanced retail space, I believe will improve the retail, improve her space as much as it will improve our space. Obviously, any building that we do on the property, we have to make sure that we don't harm any of the buildings around us. Um, that is, you know, just par for the course. It doesn't have much to do with this particular, uh, commission, but of course, we will, um, do everything we can to be sure that, in fact, nothing, uh, happens to the structure next door. As far as items coming off the roof, obviously, once again, that is not something that, uh, we are for, nor will we be allowing it. Um, and, um, it is something that we will certainly take into effect when we're renting these particular units. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is the residential is allowed in this zone, in the retail A zone. We're talking about it also on the second and third floor. It enhances, then supports the downtown. You're gonna have more residential people in downtown, supporting retail, supporting your store, supporting our stores and all the others. It's close to the train station. It supports the P O C D as far, as far as walkability goes. Um, it's a mixed use that's supported also by P O C D, which is what we want. We want to increase everything in this town, increase the activity in this town, increases our economic viability for this town by adding residences, residential units in here. The town in and of itself will have additional economic, uh, support through residential real estate taxes within here. So this is, these are all positives, um, that are coming from this particular project. And yes, there will be disturbances like there always is when there's construction and it's unfortunate. We'll try to do it as fast as we can and with as least amount of, least amount of, um, pain for everybody else around us. I mean, obviously, that is something that we are committed to. Um, as far as the, um, tea and spice and tea goes, I'll let Daniel respond to that as, uh, essentially their tenants within the building itself.
Yeah, let me just briefly say to Pam, you and your husband, that we look forward and Grant and I fully appreciate that we're gonna need to spend a lot of time with you, talking through, thinking through how this is gonna work while you guys, uh, keep the store in operation. Understandably, the seller of the property, um, and we respect his feeling, has felt it was premature until we had a zoning approval, until it was clear we were going forward with the purchase to enter into detailed discussions with you about how that, how all that would work. And I think his concern frankly was he didn't want you worrying about all those repercussions or how it be dealt with until it was clear that we are in fact going forward. But assuming that we do go forward, we absolutely fully understand what a difficult spot you'll be in and that we're gonna need to work with you in many ways and many aspects of your operation to keep you alive through the renovations so that you can be there when the building is is fully renovated and, and, uh, fully occupied again.
That's all we have.
That's it.
Thank you.
You talked about that, the tunnel, you're gonna put up a tunnel for the, for the pedestrians. And now how does that relate to the store? You, you go in through the tunnel and then you can still go in the store.
Yeah, yeah. In, in, in New York City, you see it all the time and that retail stores in the ground floor keep operating. They are often given permission to put signs up on outside of that, what's called a street bridge or a sidewalk bridge that then has scaffolding above it and a wrapper around it. But great effort is made to keep the visibility to the storefronts, to keep their entrances unblocked and frankly, to make it very safe so that pedestrians, as they do every day, all the time, walk back and forth underneath those structures while work is going on above, but are protected by the structure itself.
I'd like to add to that, um, since you refer to New York City, uh, your city is using a new approved bridge that was designed by the A I A New York. And, uh, it's quite handsome. So if you're really looking towards New York City, I'd also take some inspiration from that.
Yeah, well, familiar with, know what you're talking about, yeah. Go ahead.
Quick, quick question. Will the, the retail looks like, uh, doesn't have bathrooms or, or water, it looks like. So would, would the concept be, they would be more, you know, uh, I just wasn't sure. I didn't see like a bathroom or a central bathroom. I've seen some scenarios where there's just a central bathroom and it's just a non-restaurant use, non-water uses.
Yeah, no, there, some of the, some of the units today do have bathrooms and some don't. But I think our plan would be to at least provide for the plumbing to make it possible in logical places to, to add a bathroom to any or all of the spaces.
Okay, so that I should just, when you have that blank gray space, it's kind of a fungible space at this point for that.
The white box.
Ideally, if we can identify retail tenants as we're in the design process, we can work with them to figure that out. But we'll, we'll make accommodation to be sure that it's possible to add plumbing if needed.
Cause I know that there are lots of different retail uses that would require that, so.
That, that would require at a minimum a building permit, probably whatever tenant fitouts they would do separate from this renovation project. And, you know, the building code would mandate that, so it would definitely be covered through other approval processes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the design didn't preclude certain uses like, uh,
If I, if I can ask, the, uh, the tenant, the spice store, they're currently in one of the spaces. How big is the space that they're in right now?
It's roughly sixteen, seventeen hundred feet. It's the, it's the very long space that goes all the way to the back on the south end of the building.
The five A and five B.
Be together, yes, that's their, that's their current space.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, are we comfortable closing this application? I thought we talked about approving with having them come back with a resolution.
What did you think, Mr. Rucci? What did you think you were doing?
I heard, no, I heard that we were looking at doing it more like the library as the way they came back when there was an, an approval. That was a suggestion that was made. Coming back with the design before the building permit as far as the, the fourth floor goes and this commission approving that particular design.
So I'll just jump in. You know, it is pushing eleven o'clock at night. Is the commission planning to deliberate this whole application tonight? Because if they are, if you all don't feel that you can make the best decision over the next, you know, hours, we're approaching midnight after that, you may just want to keep the application open. If you're not going to be able to vote tonight.
I personally, I'd like to see the applicant come back with the solutions before we deliberate and vote on this. Don't mean to delete, delay you guys, but I think we need final clarity on that design solution.
And that's specifically the fourth floor?
So the, the fourth floor, north and south elevations, as well as the materiality and color and whatever on the, on the fourth floor. I don't think we had any specific comments as to the other elevation storefront or garage entrance or anything. I think we're clear on that. You guys have done a good job depicting all of that.
You also maybe wanted to see some additional text as far as retail, always having be fronting Main Street, potentially under the tax change.
Yeah, we will will, will have.
Willing to submit language, we might as well have them submit language.
Submit the language. I think our concern is, uh, any kind of retail, oh, I'm sorry, residential at the front end of the property.
Understand.
So, um, right now, you've got, um, effectively a you know, like a sixty, forty split, um, uh, in terms of front to rear. Forty in front. Um, I'm not sure if that's exactly the percentage we want to use, but we want language in there that protects the integrity of the, of the retail front elevation, maintaining it as retail. Um, and then this type of a first floor residential application at the rear of the property. You know, there's gonna be very few retail spaces in town that can actually satisfy that, but that would have to be a, a special condition where they, they can actually make that happen.
Okay, I mean, you could also condition that as well, I guess. Technically, you may be able to condition that the retail space has to be a certain percentage of the, of the front of it, but we, we can give, we can at least, um, put for some language that maybe.
Depending on geography or the
The other area, I think, from a materiality perspective, would be helpful to just understand, um, the storefront materiality.
Like a material board?
Just, I was just noticing that you, when you mentioned the ginkgoes, you had a picture of, you know, the red gray building down. And I was noticing that a lot of the details that do make our sods nicer, for example, the red gray building has, you know, a, a granite threshold. It, you know, it has a little more material that is specific to the, the way those vestibules are done. And if you go up Elm, like some of them are just better done than others. So I, I think I'd have a, a better level of comfort if I understood if you're putting up a bunch of AZAC and cheap materials or whether you're, you're putting up, you know, high-quality cheap materials or whether you're, you're putting up, you know, high quality materials, which the rest of the design seems consistent. It's just there isn't as much detail in that storefront construction, so.
Okay.
I, I would like a materials board myself, I think, see it, touch it. Just ease your, wrap your mind around that. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This application is continued. Yes, it's got eleven o'clock, so. Jump back to the open, open applications that we need to deliberate. It's the YMCA, yeah, it's just YMCA actually, because these two are combined. YMCA guys, this is the C H P generator and what they're proposing. Thoughts, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion if I may.
Can I just, can we speak before you make a motion on the, the noise and some sort of condition? Because as I recall, he was explaining that once you hit the receptor, it was a little over forty-five, which actually didn't comply with the noise ordinance. Then if you added some additional screening or some sort of muting.
Acoustic blankets.
Acoustic blankets. Then you would be under the noise ordinance, so I think we need to add some condition that those be implemented as part of the approval to get under the forty-five.
Where, where would the blankets go, the entire perimeter of the fence?
The applicant said that they were installing those, so maybe just a condition that they are installed as proposed instead of.
We're already proposing to install them to get, and the area, if I'm correct in remembering what he said, the, the amount of blankets they were going to install would reduce the decibel reading at the receptor area by three decimals. So it would go from forty-five point three, whatever it was, to forty-two point three.
And that was shown in their plan, the.
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, so long as it's there to get there, because the way he was describing was that we're really complying with the noise ordinance, so that should be in there.
So my only question about this is, is there a zoning ordinance concerning heights of enclosures or fences?
So fences are permitted to be up to eight feet in height when they are not in the setback, which this fence complies with that regulation. And this, this mechanical equipment, as far as the regulation goes, is considered an accessory structure because unfortunately, the regulations do not, you know, specify the difference between mechanical equipment and accessory structures. So in this zone, you can have an accessory structure that's twenty feet tall. I want to say this is maybe twelve, fifteen feet if we're being, you know, really conservative, so it meets the height requirements as well.
Well, I was actually going the other direction, wondering if we can ask them to do a twelve foot fence.
Cannot.
But we can't.
It would violate the zoning.
That's why I asked the first question first.
Where I was going with the fence modification, because right now with the, they're effectively leaving the fenced enclosure and the pad that they have in situ. And they're fitting the new equipment into it and modifying the planting and moving some planting around. I, it's a chain link fence, there's not a huge cost to that. My recommendation is move, because they have the ability and the access from the backside to move that access toward to the backside so that the whole south elevation is plantings all the way across, which will further screen the visibility of that muffler and, and housing that's on top of the generator.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Agree to that.
He said they would.
But they said they would look into it.
Yeah, they didn't say yes, they said no.
I would caution to making it a requirement, just, you know, candidly, we, next month, you will likely be getting a request from a previous approval for a condition that they need removed that was placed similarly to this, where you kind of designed things after it was closed. And in hindsight, they cannot actually accommodate that request. So I just, I don't recommend requiring it, like you could maybe put a condition saying explore this, but requiring that they do this and then they are unable to do this means they have to come back to you because they can't comply with your condition.
It's fine, I'm, I'm fine with saying exploring.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I ask?
Hey, but you, you do realize that part of the landscape issue is that they need access right through the middle of it. They have a double door there.
You don't know that, they didn't know that.
On the rendering.
I know that, but they don't know that. I specifically asked them, is the positioning of the door specific to the access requirements of the equipment? And he said, I don't know.
Okay, but they don't know, but I think you can pretty much assume that they need that kind of access.
Oh, but they need access, I just, I can't assume, nor can you.
It's on the rendering.
And I understand it's on the rendering. We can't assume, nor did the applicant know that it needed to be in that specific location.
Okay, that's fair, but, but I do agree that we should ask them to explore additional planting that will not necessarily hide or cover, but remediate to some degree the condition.
Well, there's a sound, the commission requests that the applicant explore the feasibility to relocate the opening of the proposed fence enclosure.
And to, to enable a continuous row of planting along the south elevation.
Along edge. Do we, do we know why, like, that whole structure is up on that berm?
There is propane tanks buried in that berm.
And, but aren't they removing those propane tanks, so it's no longer using them? So why wouldn't they just sink it down?
Because then they'd have to, there's already a concrete pad there, so they'd have to regrade, disturb the area, so.
Okay, so the expense would be they'd have to rip up the concrete and then.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's no need to, so why would you disturb?
If that came down, the fence would come down, it would be the same condition at a lower level. It's not.
Too many dollar project lowering it five feet doesn't, I, I was just curious, I, I was wondering why that wasn't considered. But if it was because the cement was already there.
And I like the language that you, too, you just created, so why don't you see if we can incorporate that?
Let me read it back again. The commission requests that the applicant explore the feasibility to relocate the opening of the proposed fence enclosure to ensure a continuous line of landscape screening along the southern. Okay, southern edge of the fence.
Well, I'll move that we approve it with the request that Ms. Curry just noted as part of that. The reasons that this would strikes me as a significant benefit to public health and safety in the town of Canaan. A, a, a big, big plus, as we've heard from emergency management head, as well as unanimous statements from our town council and Board of Selectmen is an important public health and safety. I, I think the impact is, as far as coverage is, is extremely minimal. I think the noise is being well moderated. And the screening is going to be robust with a significant environmental benefit of this type of installation. Those are my reasons, Mr. Chairman.
You're making the first motion.
I'm making the motion, that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, call to vote, Dan Radman, a vote yes, Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Ag? Yes.
Alan Swirlo?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
Eric Knowles?
Yes.
This motion passes, this application passes. Okay, so that takes care of our open applications and deliberation, administrative actions. So one thing that was, I guess, overlooked by for select men's, for select woman, is the official appointment of Sarah as zoning inspector and appointment of Stephen Payne as assistant zoning inspector.
Of them, just soon, it was all of us technically, they have no say over that.
Okay.
Blame in the wrong spot, but.
But it was, it was overlooked. So what, Sarah, what would do we need to officially do for appointing you guys?
To appoint myself as zoning inspector and Stephen as assistant zoning inspector to essentially grant us the powers that are established in the zoning regulations to act as your agent.
Do we have to do a roll call vote or it's a unanimous, all in favor? So commissioners, to what Sarah just described, voting to have Sarah Carey as our zoning inspector and Stephen Payne as our assistant zoning inspector to execute and oversee the, the zoning regulations for the town of Canaan.
There's a motion and a second.
Do I have a motion?
Told.
Second.
Second. Call to vote, raise your hands. John, unanimous. Your job. Timeline, timeline reminder for P O C D adoption. So, John, do you want to give a quick update on all the fun meetings we've had for P O C D?
Yes. Most recently, in recent weeks, I think it's fair, we, we Dan Radman, Sarah Carey and I attended town council meetings as part of the P O C D. Once the subcommittees declared it substantially complete, it kicks off a mandatory sixty-five day public review period, which ended a couple of days ago.
Friday.
Right, a couple of days ago on Friday, Friday it ended. During that, also, it then is referred to the town council, which has several choices. It can reject it in total, it can reject it in part, it can approve it as is or approve it with recommendations of changes they think would be useful. They, the town council met last night and we attended and they endorsed, is the formal term, endorsed the plan of conservation development. But they did come up with some recommendations for changes. So those would be reviewed. Also, there were a number of statements from the public submitted as part of the sixty-five day public comment period. And the P O C D subcommittee is meeting here tomorrow night to review the town council recommendations as well as the public input. The goal of that is that by, I hope, maybe before this time tomorrow night, but tomorrow night, we will, we, the subcommittee will have voted on a final draft. And at that point, our heavy lifting will be done and the ball will pass to the, to Chairman Radman and the entire Planning and Zoning Commission to review and approve a final plan of conservation development. At that time, the full Plan Zoning Commission can make alterations as it sees fit. So that is the next event, so that would be in October tenth, special meeting day.
And so I, I just also want to briefly add, you know, for commissioners that are not on the subcommittee, you know, if you have questions about what's recommended, any concerns, we would appreciate if you brought that to our attention now and not on October tenth. You know, I, I think the goal is to adopt the plan on October tenth. You know, we've tried to keep you all in the loop, so if there were any concerns, I'm hopeful that you would have brought them up earlier. I understand things happen, so I would just politely request that if, if there are questions or concerns, you know, either come to the meeting tomorrow night if you're available or let me know and we can discuss.
I would suggest that everyone, everyone on the commission should read the P O C D draft, which is on our website, and familiarize him or herself with, with that. There's other information on the website, such as some of the commentary, which may be food for thought for them as they consider their own views.
And just final thought, we established October tenth at last month's meeting because it appeared that that date, we would be able to have a quorum. We do need a quorum, which is six members or five members, but six plus would be better. So if, if for some reason you are no longer available on that date, please let me or Lola know as soon as possible because if we don't have a quorum, we are not having the meeting, we'll have to reschedule. So please, please let me know.
That's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock on October tenth.
So for those that, that aren't on the subcommittee, Sarah, are you, because the, the town council had a lot of opinions.
Yeah, so I mean, again, the, the subcommittee is going to review all of those tomorrow. If any regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission has questions about town councils' recommendations, please let me know, I will send them all to you. Again, you can also watch the recording of tomorrow night's meeting, you can attend via Zoom, attend in person if you're a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we're not trying to, you know, gatekeep these town council comments. Let us know if you want them, let's try to address them before October tenth, not on October tenth.
I think it would be worth, so the, the quick summary on the town council, because we've done five meetings, five meetings with them since the middle of July. And the goal was always to, to get a consolidated, reconciled single list of comments from the town council body that we would review and consider and incorporate as required. It took us a while to get there because the town council members were giving us, each individual member was giving us a page or five pages or ten pages of comments, so it was kind of all over the place. It took a while to get there, but we got there, so we did end up getting a list of nine, I think nine motions, one of which was dropped.
Sixty actual recommendations.
Sixty actual recommendations, but they, the, many of them fall into sort of the same category of like the motion is to eliminate the word shall, right, you know, and that may have.
One of them.
It was one of them, there was one. But there was a straggler in there, but that's, that's kind of the, the gist of it.
And I'm, I've also synthesized all those comments for the subcommittee and sent it out, so.
Very usefully, I thought.
Thank you.
Excellent report.
But so for, you know, other commissioners who want to see it, it, it may sound daunting, but I, I have tried to synthesize it as much as possible for you all.
Some of their comments were very constructive, they were good observations, worth considering and probably worth changing. Some we need to talk about and, and decide whether we want to go down those routes. Their, their concerns were legitimate in terms of just protecting the town. What's the best way to put it? Protecting the town from the state. Right? Because the state has certain goals and initiatives on development within the various municipalities and how those are controlled. And their concerns, which are valid, are how are we wording and phrasing the P O C D so as to mitigate that type of, or potentially prevent that type of influence from the state? I don't know if that's effectively possible, I mean, states state and they can make their own laws and overrule us. But that's, that was their goal and it's, it's well intentioned and we'll go through it all and discuss it all.
Some of the items are really grouped and so they may say, for example, we want to get rid, eliminate overlay districts is one of the ones they had.
Get in the weeds.
There are quite a few. So they're, they're, they come in bunches, so it's a lot of bit is, do you, what do we think about the topic in and of itself? But all this will be reviewed tomorrow and the documents that Sarah put together, I think will be helpful in speeding the process.
You sent that to the subcommittee?
I sent it to the subcommittee, I'm happy to send it to any commissioner that wants it.
I think it'd be good to send it to all of us, since we're going to be.
Yeah, I would circulate it to everyone.
Was there, was there any dissension among the, because I mean, some of the, somebody, I was just curious because it seems like, okay, they want to remove any sort of transference development, remove any reference to Viking, remove any.
I'll say that the, the votes were almost all seven to five.
Yeah, it was clearly along party lines, if you really get into the weeds of it. But again, we'll, we can talk about all of this tomorrow night.
There were seven to five.
None of the votes were unanimous, put it that way.
Well, I think it's relevant if we all have to, like, basically adjudicate whether we agree with the town council or not. I think it's relevant to all of us to understand.
Absolutely.
At this juncture, how contentious the town council was as to what these are, because I, I also figure if the town council basically denudes the whole P O C D, then potentially it won't pass the muster of the regional reg, right?
Not at all.
West cog.
They were upon.
Again, it wasn't approval or denial, they just provided comments.
And again, and again, the town council is only in advisory role.
Right, so if we reject all their. Right, so if we reject all their comments.
We don't have to listen to any of them.
Well, the, the way the motion was written, they've endorsed the plan and they've remanded comments to the commission, so the commission can approve it. All they need is a simple majority to adopt the P O C D as is, without any of town council's recommendations. Not that you're not going to incorporate at least some of them, but there's no requirement to.
Endorsement means majority, P N Z passes it. Non-endorsement means a super majority of two-thirds is needed to override. That's the rule.
Okay, so we will go through this at the P O C subcommittee tomorrow.
Seven.
We'll meet in a special meeting on Ju, on October tenth. And again, to reiterate Sarah's point, if any of the other commission members have any comments or questions or observations on this, please send them as soon as possible, not wait until October tenth. Moving on, discussion of possible text amendments to section three, seven, E and eight point five of zoning regulations.
So as requested at the August planning and zoning meeting, related to that coverage exception, special permit, you know, we just had the settlement vote for two seventy-four country club, which was a denial, because the commission feels that this regulation should really only be for pre-existing homes. I've essentially just added, so this, everything in black is what the regulation already is. I've essentially recommended that, you know, if, if this is the route the commission wants to go and they don't want it to be for new construction, that you should do something along the lines of an additional requirement is based on town of New Canaan tax assessor records or building permit files, the principal structure of the lot shall be constructed at least X years prior to the date of the special permit application submission. Through in the sixty, going back to twenty twenty, every house was built in the fifties that received approval from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four on these. I think that's just a coincidence. So the one in twenty twenty, nineteen fifty-three, nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen fifty, with a renovation in two thousand eight. The fifty-six Brooks Road, which you approved last month, was built in nineteen forty-two, but had a massive renovation in two thousand seven. So I mean, that's where, you know, like that, that home was completely redone in two thousand seven. You know, not really a nineteen forties home anymore, but you felt that that, you know, met the standard. So I put in sixty years, based on that data. Fifty years would give you a nineteen seventy-four home. There were probably a lot of subdivisions and homes built in the seventies, so maybe going to forty years instead of sixty would be safe. Again, this is just my quick suggestion. I'm happy to come next month with a actual formal regulation amendment, but before I did that, I wanted to take the temperature on this language and the way I'm going about it and the, potentially the age of the structure. What are everyone's thoughts?
I like this in that it lends clarity to the intent of this regulation.
Yeah.
Right? The, without it, I think it leaves us wide open to more applications like the one we just had to settle that will take advantage of that and, and just build bigger. I personally think a fifty-year timeframe is more than adequate in terms of a, a barometer for, for whether it qualifies or not. You know, quite frankly, everything from, you know, the nineteen seventies onward, people were, and towns were just much more aware and cautious on zoning and building. So, you know, sixties and earlier was kind of the wild, wild west out here. You know, it was the days of Philip Johnson building a glass house on a mound somewhere, probably without a building permit. So I, I like this language. I, I have no issue with adopting this.
Okay, but you're thinking fifty?
I think fifty is a good number. Commissioners, thoughts?
I agree with you, Dan.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's easy. So as long as the agenda isn't too crazy for next month, I'll come back with a formal application.
Okay.
And then the other one.
Take public hearing on it.
Yeah.
Because I'm just curious. I mean, people may have other good reasons why forty-two or whatever is the right number.
Yep.
Public hearing, a text amendment.
Yep. Okay, and then other regulation that we would like to see changed sooner rather than later is section eight point five, which is our enforcement regulation. So we recently received an appeal, essentially anytime Stephen or I make a decision or take an action, it can be appealed. And, you know, through that process, it became very clear that our zoning enforcement process, which we do actually have a very formulaic process that we follow, is not written down anywhere. And you know, the, the public, I think, would benefit from having our enforcement process formalized, and other towns have done it. So essentially, it would be removing section C, which is violations, and basically just referring to a different document that would be a policy that you all would adopt. And it basically just outlines our enforcement process, which has been developed, you know, copying other towns, also through our formal Connecticut, you know, certified zoning enforcement official training of how we go about the process. And basically, it's, it wouldn't require us to follow this process, but just so the public has something, because, you know, zoning issues can get emotional and, you know, very stressful for homeowners, and then them not understanding our process just creates additional stress for all parties involved. So we want to see that happen eventually, when the agenda allows us the time to formalize that. So I wanted to give you all heads up, and if there are any initial concerns or questions.
I thought what you posted last week, you were being too nice, but that's just me. You know, you should have the tools you need to enforce zoning and, you know, the, the multiple rounds of coaxing people to comply, I feel like is not, if you're in violation, you're in violation and you're classified. But if you think that it's appropriate in the way that, you know, you propose it, then by all means, go for it. And I'm, and I'm in favor.
Okay.
I mean, what do you need from, I mean, you, are you thinking about listing out, like, a complaint comes in?
Yeah, so it is essentially, yes. And then it would just be a policy that you all, you know, basically give your endorsement of. I more just wanted to give you all the heads up that this would probably be coming in the next few months, rather than just put it on an agenda and shock everyone that this was coming.
My only, my only comment is, what, one problem with writing down a bunch of rules or policy as to how you're going to proceed is that then if you don't follow it, it gives them ammunition that they wouldn't have if it was less specific. So you know, in drafting this, I think you should consider that.
Agreed. And I mean, in language that we're borrowing from other towns, they make it explicitly clear that, you know, the office is not required to follow this.
Right.
You know, essentially, so I think we would do that and we would, you know, review this all with the town attorney. Again, this was more just a heads up that this may be coming in, unless there were any major red flags, we would move forward.
That was my question. Have, have Ira or Pete looked at this yet?
Not yet, because it's not formal and I just wanted to take your temperature first.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, anything further on this? Okay, so you'll come back to us. You'll check with legal counsel? And then come back to us with the final draft of this? P N Z schedule for twenty twenty-five?
We'll push that to next month. We, we didn't get it done in time.
Approval of minutes. This is the August twenty-seventh, special meeting from six o'clock and the regular meeting from seven o'clock. Anyone have any changes or comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Show of hands for approval. Unanimous. Those are approved. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.